Well, I think you're brilliant enough to go through.
Really?
Some things, well. Yeah. Well, thank you anyway. You're welcome.
A friend of ours has two friends in mind at the department. She says this one. We just can't sit still.
Grab it out. My thoughts still issued.
It's still a lot.
We're getting ready for your third one. We're doing thirty-one. We said that we're thirty-one. Yeah, we've been actually. But then you know that you. You've got to already want my last. You can add. You don't have to do it all.
All right, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Rapid County Planning Commission to order and invite all citizens of the United States to please rise and pledge allegiance to the plan of our country. I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. The next order of business is the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to, in light of the fact that we have a public hearing that I assume many people are going to want to speak at, I would propose that we move the minutes to beend the meeting or to hold business or something like that. And because I know it's exciting to hear us discuss the changes to the minutes, but I think that will save time. So with that proposed amendment, does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Phil, move.
All right.
All in favor?
All right.
Pose and no. All right. I guess I'll take the role. Mr. Light?
Here.
Mr. Shulon?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
Here.
Mr. Henry? Not here. Mr. Fraser? And Miss Ishi? All right, that's a quorum. All right, having deferred the review of our minutes of the past couple of meetings, the next order of business is a public hearing on the 2020 revision revised comprehensive plan for Rapid County. The way I'd like to proceed is I'm going to have some initial comments and then open the public hearing. We're going to hear from the people who are present in the auditorium. I understand we do have Zoom, which I hope is working. And then we'll call on those people. And we have received some written comments, so I'm going to summarize them after the people who are on Zoom have spoken and then close the public hearing and then the commission will decide what we're going to do next. Does anybody have any comments on any of that? No, good one. Okay. The comprehensive plan is mandated by the Code of Virginia for every locality to adopt. And it's really a critical document because it is the framework for all the other land use and planning ordinances that the county has, namely the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. Those all are to follow the general terms and conditions and provisions of the comprehensive plan. And many of the uses that are allowed, for example, in the zoning ordinance are permitted only based on a finding that whatever the proposed use is that someone's applied for is compatible with the comprehensive plan. So it's really a key document in our planning and our land use regulation, which is a key to keep in Rapid scenic and beautiful and the kind of community that we all want to live in. So the document that is on tonight has been worked on for at least, to my knowledge, ten years. The code requires that it be that the comprehensive plan, once adopted, be reviewed every five years. And the last time the comprehensive plan was actually adopted was in 2004. So it was due to be reviewed and revised in 2009. And here we are. A lot of work has gone into it over the years by our former county administrator, John McCarthy, by previous members of this commission, by present members, by our zoning administrator, by new county administrator, Mr. Curry. Oh, I see. Right. He has been really quite an asset in helping to shape this new revision. He came, as many know, from Gloucester County, and they recently went through a considerable process of reviewing their plans. So a lot of that is fresh in his mind, and he brought in a lot of insight and assistance. And I want to thank him. I want to thank Ms. Summers. She brought in a lot of experience from Page County. I want to thank all the members of the commission that are up here and especially my predecessor in this chair, Mr. Light, Mr. Settle, and various other people without whom this document would not be in the shape that it's in. And we've had a lot of work sessions this year on this plan for several months until the COVID situation arose. We were having two work sessions every month to work on it. And we resumed that work in May or early June. And so finally, we've got not a finished product. I think it's something that never really gets finished, but I think it's as finished as it's going to be for right now. I want to highlight just a few of the, what I think are the significant changes and improvements in the comprehensive plan from my perspective. And those are as follows. First of all, the all the data, and a lot of which is very interesting data about the population and so forth of the county, has been updated, as updated as it can be based on the statistics that are used in it. The goals set, which is Chapter Six, the principles and goals section, has been significantly updated and approved. And Chapter Seven, which is the future land use plan, is one of the key things that we have worked on this year and reflects some very important changes that were just sort of lacking. We had a future land use plan that was pretty general in the previous iteration of the plan, and that's the way it was for many years. And so we've gotten a little more specific. We have added maps, which are, I know, an issue of some concern based on the comments we've had. We've added not only village maps, but we have added a variety of other maps that are referenced in some of the other sections. We've got a map of scenic highways and byways in the county. We've got a map of historic sites around the county. And things like that have been added, not just the village maps. And some of those maps and some of those sites and areas are tied in to some of the other parts of the plan. And I guess I'd say cross-reference. Significant work was done on the provisions of the plan that have to do with wireless communications. And up until now, as many of you are aware, who come to these meetings and the board supervisors, that there really wasn't much beyond bare bones on citing of those kind of facilities. And so a pretty big section has been added on that that is modeled after primarily Fairfax and Falkir County, what they did. And it's based on language that requires that things be camouflaged and so forth and so on, so that it blends in with the surrounding area and isn't an eyesore, preserves our scenic beauty. But it's also a language that was taken to challenge in court in Fairfax and state court as well as in federal court and upheld. So it's not just some flowery language or some ideas or some untested verbiage. It's based on language that the courts of both the state and federal level have basically blessed. Also, there is a significant section that's been added about solar and renewable energy facilities and citing them so that, again, it doesn't affect or minimizes the impact on the view shed and is compatible with the rural nature of the county. So having said all that, and before I open it up, I want to, again, thank everybody who helped put this together. And I want to thank all of you for coming. I see we have a member of the Board of Supervisors, in addition to Mr. Fraser, of course, and a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I want to thank you for coming. Oh, two members, right. Sorry. I can't tell with all these masks. Oops. And I can't see that far. So excuse me, we're two members of the Board of Supervisors. And I hope that for all of you, the comments and so forth and discussion will be instructed. I also want to thank Mr. Curry and Ms. Gibson and Ms. Ishi, who were, set up Zoom access to the meeting for tonight. And so we're going to be able to, I hope, hear comments from people who, for whatever reason, couldn't make it to the meeting or didn't feel that it was safe to come to the meeting. And that's one of the goals of the comprehensive plan at the very end of Chapter Six, is to encourage public participation. I think that's a really important and significant thing so that people understand, get a better understanding of how the comprehensive plan works and how it interfaces with our zoning and subdivision laws. And so that's all to the good. Sometimes people can't come to the meeting for one reason or another, whatever it might be. So I think the Zoom thing is something we're going to try to continue, not just for this public hearing, but at future meetings as well. So I want to thank the volunteer and the people who helped set it up. All right, that said, I'm going to, any other commissioners have anything they want to add to what I've said before we start the public hearing?
If I may, Mr. Chair. I'd just also like to thank Ms. Gibson and Mr. Curry and Mr. Ponic for helping to set up the Zoom option. It's, you know, it's a little bit different than what we're used to. So just thank you for helping cooperation on that.
I can spell Zoom, and that was about the limit of my contribution to it. Anyway, all right, with that said, I'm now going to open the public hearing on the comprehensive plan. And whether he wants to or not, I see his hand is up. The first person that is going to speak is Mr. Phil Irwin of Flint Hill, who, as I look down at the audience, has been to more planning commission meetings than anybody living or dead, I think. Phil, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Phil Irwin of Flint Hill. And I have a couple of comments I'd like to share with you. Since. Since mid-1960s, I have been privileged to witness and to contribute to Rapid County planning. In 1973, the Rapid League for Environmental Protection paid $1,500 to the then brand-new Piedmont Environmental Council to test their new capability of mapping and to produce for us a big-based map and a total of nineteen Mylar overlays. And that was the way we planned back then because that was way before there was any computer technology that was available. So we were early on in the concept of planning here in Rapid County, ahead of most of the counties in the state. Today, your proposed plan continues our nearly fifty years of evolution begun here long before it was required, directing that inevitable growth not destroy the God-given environmental values which separate us from other counties around us. It is close to perfect. In my personal opinion, there are several issues remaining to be addressed. And to the future planning commission would be advised to address the subjects of light pollution and noise from such as guns and dogs. All of those ingredients involve the quality of life that we all cherish here in Rapid. See, Rapid is incomparably different and eddy in the river of time. Thank you for your work. Please unanimously approve this work and forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And thank you, Phil, for all the years of your informal service.
My pleasure.
Does anyone else want to speak? Oh. Come on. Oh, please, one thing I didn't cover was, please state your name and your district and try to keep your comments within a reasonable period of time. I think we can say something like five minutes, but if you need more time, we'll see how it goes.
Anita Remus Hampton District. To begin with, thank you all, as somebody who observed what you've all gone through a good bit of the time. I appreciate all the work that's been done by all the members of this commission, past members, past chairman, current chairman, et cetera. It's been a labor of love for all of us. First of all, there's a comment in the in the plan that says something about an annual review of the comprehensive plan. I urge the board, as you're getting near to 2021, to put a solid date, an extra meeting, meeting number thirteen somewhere along the way during the year, that you're going to make that annual time to sit down and look at the plan. And it may take you five minutes or five hours, but still, it's worthwhile. It's a good idea to look it over. And I do have a couple of suggestions, not so much for 2021, but by 2022, you can probably update a lot of the census information, update the information on fire and emergency services and the sheriff's 911 program, and also update about capital improvements. And that would be the little tiny things that are so much of a pain to keep up with. And we'll give you a chance at that time also, take a second look at all of those things and see if there need to be any changes. So that's one of my suggestions. And then I'm now into the little things. Page seven. First row, paragraph, line seven. We say that George Washington surveyed and platted Little Washington. Could we just say purportedly? I'm a history major. Sorry, but I had to say that. Page forty-nine, Amosville. Some of the places mentioned are outside in the village and could be referred to as near the village. Also, it mentions there's a restaurant. I think that might be an old mention of the Lombardine. So I think that needs to go or be rearranged or something accordingly.
What page?
Page forty-nine, under Amosville. And like we say, using the term the area or near could take care of a couple of words. Page sixty-two, under recreation, paragraph three about RCRFA. Could we mention that our park is now an official dark sky park, please?
An official what?
Dark sky park. Page sixty-three, also under recreation. Could we also add a sentence at the end that says equestrian activities include three recognized fox hunts? Page seventy-two, paragraph number one, under fine arts. Could it also be mentioned that we traditionally have a fall arts tour? I'm going all the way down to Chapter Six, page eighty-six. I don't have the whole full sentence in front of me, but paragraph two, number five, I believe, mentions something about bicycle paths and hiking paths. And I want to mention horseback riding also in that sentence. Another comment on page eighty-seven and eighty-eight, we talk about supporting an inventory of our historic buildings and doing some studies to create historic districts. And we have done none of that. And I hope that sometime in the next two or three years, one could, somebody, either you or the board, can create a group that can start studying this sort of thing. It's still important to do, even though they mentioned, y'all mentioned it back in 2004 and nothing's really been done. I suggest a historical slash architectural committee of some sort. Page ninety-one, principle seven, number five. The first word in the paragraph there, I believe, is the word approve. And I think that the better word might be to change that word to consider. Page ninety-six, under historic preservation, line six. This is about the historic building survey that was done and the fact that it was done in 2003. That's the other historian who needs it, wants to make sure you remember when you did things so nobody starts wondering what that's all about. Page ninety-eight, about general county government office space. On line three, this was written as a future thing, but right now, we have engaged an organization who have completed in nineteen, pardon me, in 2019, a review. This is about the building survey. And on line seven, on that same page ninety-eight, I suggest the last sentence has a parentheses, lease purchase. I suggest that you add where it's lease purchase and build considering the board meeting that went on one day. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad somebody read it. Anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Alexander, I'm in the Wakefield District in Flint Hill section. And yes, I read it several months ago. Yellowed lines and deletions and changes got a little confusing to me. Couple of different things.
Ma'am, could you maybe speak into the mic a little bit because it's hard to hear you?
Is that legal?
Let me move that, maybe you can move it a little bit closer.
Testing, one, two, three. That better? Okay. I think it's page seventy-seven. I was a little bit shocked to read, "Landowners who opt out of land use taxation pay back five years and roll back taxes in the difference between the land use value and the market value of the previous five years." And I wondered, I found that kind of shocking, you know, that somebody's, five years seems a long time to roll back something that's a penalty. And I wondered how you came to that decision?
State law.
Because the other things that are being addressed by land use, we thought were being followed by state law. When we researched them, there were recommendations out of Virginia Tech that were not law. So I just wanted to double check that that's must. Okay. Number seven, principle seven, promoting economic growth. To make, by maintaining agricultural employment base to continue, to ensure the continued role of agriculture as an important economic activity. And then under there, there's one, five, and then number one, A. Preserve accesses trail heads into the Shenandoah National Park. I'd like to see something specific about that, like a deadline for when you might pick one or two places so that the whole valley is not trying to park over in Madison. They spread out a little bit because they're, they're over, they're parking lots forward. We need to make sure people can access the park from somewhere else. And also to back up the other gal's comments about page sixty-five, I think it was add equestrian riding, equestrian sports to where it had bicycle and hiking and trails where it's appropriate. I turned in a whole bunch of comments along this line months ago. Does anybody remember reading what I submitted? Because it doesn't, you know, even the ones that are being mentioned by other people didn't seem to make it into the changes, so kind of disappointing. I didn't know if I needed to rewrite them, my comments, get more people to back them, or what it would take to produce a change. How many people would you want to hear from to add something to the comprehensive plan? I won't ask for an answer today. The other thing that was interesting to me is that we have some comments about, I'm jumping around because I'm not very organized and I lost my notes, about cluster housing and cluster lots. And one of the things that I think that we need to consider for the future is, one, one, whenever the word livestock is used or agricultural is used, they never ever include horses or horseback riding. If you talk to anybody in the county offices about horses, they're rather demeaning in their tone. And say, well, they're just companion animals, and so therefore, you're not making money with them. Well, that may be, that most of them are pets, but they sure cost a lot of money. They bring a lot of money in. We support a lot of vets, a lot of techs. Probably fifty percent of the hay that's made is going into a horse's mouth rather than a cow or a little sheep. And I think that there's no recognition of the fact that our economic future is going to be not cows. It's going to be livestock that are horses, that are mostly pets. And I don't see that included in here. To tie that in with the cluster housing, if you look at communities around us, they have gone with cluster housing so that they have less impact on land in terms of driveways and ponds and fencing and all that, by having one community with maybe twenty farmettes and all the animals over in one park. That is the wave of the future. There's many, many examples. I did supply some of them from both Pennsylvania, California, Virginia, and Tennessee. I can get them again if that would be helpful. But that would change our twenty-five acre zone. You'd have to write it into the subdivision plan and the comprehensive plan that you think it's a good idea. Because if it's not in the comp plan, it's not going to be in zoning plan. As far as the money part of it goes, I'd like to just remind people that one of the bigger events in the county for fundraising was the Flint Hill Fire Department Trail Run. Anybody want to guess how many horses were brought? Not humans, horses. Five hundred horses got hauled in from five states because those people are all now living in an area that they can no longer ride. Five hundred horses. Almost every one of them had two humans attached to it because a lot of us aren't very good at driving our trailers when we bring our spouses. So that was a thousand people which raised a lot of money. And that's the way, if you want to have agritourism, that needs to be recognized in here.
Okay, is that about it?
I think that's enough.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Does anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Linda Klein, I'm with the Hampton District. I just have one question about one of the commercial maps, and it's number eighteen of the map. And this, the one now, the commercial for right on two-eleven that encompasses the school board office, I've noticed that the proposed one takes it down to the entrance of the elementary school. And I was wondering, what is the purpose of that and if there is a future plan for that?
Well, if that's your question, I'll just try to answer it. I mean, we kind of re, just reshaped the map and we had a considerable discussion about it, so. I'm not sure there's a specific reason about why it comes down to the school, but it's really captured properties between the school property and Rockwell's Road.
And Rockwell's Road?
Right, so it goes on out to there, right?
Okay, is there a plan for doing something with the school board office?
There's no plan to do or not do anything. It's just an area that is designated for future growth of the commercial district that's already there. And so this plan doesn't affect any changes. Basically, it says if it's not in that area, it wouldn't be considered for rezoning. So it's not, doesn't mean that it's going to be rezoned, it just means it could be, it could be considered if somebody could apply for it and it's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else from here? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Barski?
Yo, Ms. Barski, Hampton District. First of all, big congratulations to all the commissioners and all the helpers and for your long and tedious hard work to bring the comprehensive plan to this stage. It was great work done just to start. Okay, now, my comment is on the new village maps. That was a great thing to add all the village maps because it was, the word "village" was mentioned in other documents in the past in many different ways, but it was never defined how big, what the real village area was. So, it was really a great idea to do that. But these maps are a little hard to see, especially the areas that are defined as got the overlay of cloud, this shading on it. And may I suggest to reverse the shading so that outside the village area will be shaded and the village area will be clear. That way, you can see each house, the rivers, streets much more clearly. It's, it's just, you see, you can see the, you can hardly see the two-eleven, at least on that map. If you reverse the shading, it'll be a lot easier to see than identify each houses, each house. So it's just a suggestion and thank you for the consideration. Again, big kudos to all the work you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. As the lady mentioned about the commercial area, commercial area plan, also, I mean, I said that a few times before. Is it possible to add like a word, like an overlay or some other thing? So it's not the commercial zone plan, just to distinguish from the zoning map, which we needed, by the way. I'd like to see that word added so that it's not what you're planning to make it commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Mr. Mann?
My name is John Kiaschen, Hampton District. And first of all, I want to thank Gary Curry and Michelle Discommission, his past chairman and current chairman. When I first thought about moving here and thinking about buying my best friend's house, I read the comprehensive plan and then found out that the last time it had been drafted was two thousand and four. And I was perfectly satisfied with the way it was until I had been to thirty, forty, or fifty board of supervisors' meetings, planning commission meetings, BZA meetings, and found out that there are flaws in procedures and many other things. Over the last six years since I've lived here, I cannot tell you, but a sea change has occurred. We have, we have more enforcement today than we had yesterday. We have more transparency today than we had yesterday. And I'll tell you, getting this comprehensive plan to the stage it is today and to move on is, I think, is to a great credit to all of you. But as they say, the speed of the pack is determined by the leader. And I think that's David Conick with his prodigious work ethic. And I've always admired him. And I just can't believe that it looks like they're ready to spike this in the end zone at some point. But I want to thank you all very, very much. We're so happy to live here and will live here forever. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else that's here? Ms. Grace?
Hi, Sheila Bressinger, Hampton District. First, I want to say what everybody else has said too. I'm so delighted that you guys have done this comprehensive plan. It looked like it was nearing completion in December. First, I want to thank Gary Curry for the suggestion of the consulting group that I helped, I think, helped focus everybody on the plan. I want to thank chairman, former chairman Gary Light for the work that he had done up until, up and through December. And I know he's continued on being part of your group as well. And Mr. Conick to put this whole thing together in spite of COVID. You know, I'm so proud of you guys for doing it because it's so very, very important. And then on a lighter note, I want to illustrate the success that we've had in Rappahannock County over the decades. I've been here more than thirty-eight years now, and it's fairly similar. I wanted to show you this little book, it's called "A Little House", and it's a, it's a sweet, sweet story. And I think it illustrates how successful we have been not to fall into the story of a little house. It's a little house and she was very, very happy, and she was way out in the country. And then as the years went by, more things came, more traffic, more stores. And so she finally ended up being a little house surrounded by huge buildings and a lot of unhappiness. And one day, the great granddaughter of the person who had built the little house was in this big, huge city with her husband. And she said, "Gosh, that looks like the little house that my great-grandfather built, and lo and behold, it was." And she said, "Oh, my gosh, it was so well-built. I would love to be able to have this little house in the place where it used to be so it could be happy again." So they put the little house on a truck and they put the little house way, way away, away from the city again, okay? And so she then came to be way out in the country again and very happy. We're so fortunate here that we don't have to have that problem because through the decades, our houses, we've had the spaciousness and everything. And that's been because of the comprehensive plan that people in the past had the foresight to be able to really put together with a focus on agriculture, which is very important and has been mentioned here, but also tourism, which is keeping the crazy people from wanting to live here, I guess. John McCarthy used to say, "They come, they spend their money, and they go home", putting less of a footprint here in our county. So I think we're very lucky to have such a wonderful, wonderful place. And I want to thank the planning commission for getting this thing finally finished so we can continue and go and do more things as well to keep this place the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. But it's not finally finished till the board of supervisors adopt it. But thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak before we go to the Zoom people? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Haynes from Piedmont. And first, I want to thank the people who are wearing masks for doing that. I think the more we do that, the more we will encourage people to be willing to come to the meetings and participate. And I'll echo everyone else and thanking all of you for all the work that you've done on the plan. Just sort of a housekeeping matter, in chapter six, the comprehensive plan principles, principle ten, I think it's item one, we may want to add dark skies in that reference. And then I wanted to ask if the maps that were advertised, the maps that we've been studying, are your final maps unless you decide from some input to make changes? And I know you don't usually ask questions, but is that a question that could be answered?
Well, I'll try to answer it. I think the commission decided last December to include maps. There was some discussion of whether to have maps or not. And just, just to illustrate what the problem was, or at least from my perspective, what the problem was, and plus the other commissioners agree. The old comprehensive plan for each village has an aerial photograph like this. And it has all this language in the plan about focusing growth and development and so forth around the existing villages. But there never were any actual maps that delineated what the, any boundaries for the existing villages. So arguably, and speaking as a, somebody who isn't pretty familiar with zoning law and practice and so forth and so on, some developer could come in and say, "Well, you don't have any maps, but you've got this photograph." So that's very valuable if you look at it. Or, I mean, I just picked that one out for, as an example. Anticipating this question, you'll see that there's an awful lot of area in that, that is, it's all wooded and, I mean, it's not, it's not zone, it's not conservation or agriculture, and it's pretty far from the center of what most people would consider the, the actual village. And so arguably, the language in the absence of some more finite maps would have allowed an awful lot of, at least arguably, development, rezoning, and so forth. So we have made an effort, and we've had, we've been discussing this vertical map, I know, for at least three months. And we go back and forth and we've tried to use the existing zoning, the village commercial and village residential areas of the existing villages as basically the core of what is the existing village. Now, it's not perfect, but it's better than those maps. And if you go to any of the other maps, you'll see that there's an awful lot of territory that somebody who doesn't share, I would say, the general consensus views of the people that have at least spoken here tonight, want to keep the county the way it is, but rather people that want to come here and basically develop it, they would have a leg up if we didn't have more finite maps. Are they perfect? Probably not. I think one of the good things that's come out of the discussion is for the first time, or maybe in a long time, some people on the planning commission and others who are interested in it have taken a look at what the actual zoning maps are. So that's what the maps that we've used are based on. And frankly, that was done in, I think, nineteen eighty-five. And, you know, some, what, thirty-five years later, maybe some of it doesn't make perfect sense anymore. Maybe it didn't make sense when they did it, but that's where we are. So yes, it needs work, and it needs work when there's a comprehensive review of the zoning order and say, can we get this done? But the idea is not to promote growth and development, but to restrict it to the areas that are shown on the maps. So I think for now, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but for now, yeah, those are going to be in the maps till the comprehensive plan is changed. And the way it would work from here on out, assuming those maps are developed or approved, excuse me, one of the elements, if someone did come in and asked to rezon some land to a more intensive zoning category like village residential, which is one acre, as opposed to five acres or twenty-five acres density, they would have to show that their proposal is in accord with the comprehensive plan. And if they want to base it on this aerial photograph, there'd be an awful lot more territory where they could say, sure, it's in the box. So that's, that's the intent, and again, does need more work? Does need to be updated? Certainly does, but it's a start.
Well, I was.
I hope that answers your question.
It does, in part. I was particularly curious, I knew that my friend and neighbor, Tom Taylor, had. I knew that my friend and neighbor, Tom Taylor, had, who has a 35 acre parcel adjacent to what we think of as the village had asked about having that become part of the village, but it didn't seem to be in the plan. So unless I'm misreading the map, is that correct?
I think, I think it is. After he made his comments, we had a pretty big discussion about it. And we, in Sperryville, as opposed to the other villages, two village maps, which are primarily what's currently village residential and village commercial. In Sperryville, we added some parcels that were some residential two acres and there might be some residential one acre and some residential five, if they are connected or could be connected to the sewer system. And that's very close to the only place that has that situation with sewers. So they sent the maps and, by the way, one of the people I forgot to say, because he's not here, but Mr. Monty, I think, from PD9, who helped with the maps. But we basically sent him the zoning maps. And he formulated the maps that are in the comp plan, supposedly in it, from the actual zoning maps, based on that direction. And with respect to Sperryville, they got the sewer map from the sewer authority and used that as the basis for determining whether that, this or that parcel could or could not be connected to the, to the system.
Right.
The answer was yes, it's included in the village. If it's not, it's not.
Well, I don't believe on that map that it is.
Well, Tom's here.
Correct me. So since in your minds it is, I don't believe on the map it is, perhaps I'm misreading it. So I do want to make a comment about the addition of that parcel. As I, as I read the zoning ordinance for the first time, so I'm certainly no expert, but it did seem like if we put this parcel in the village, then that would open the way to rezone it, it's currently five acre lots, to, oh, two acres, one acre, or even smaller, it would seem. So the rationale for putting it in is that it's accessible to sewer and for affordable housing. And I think there are questions about the sewer system, that it was actually put in as a growth system. And so there are many issues there, I think, that could need to be looked at. And that we don't actually know how much affordable housing we have and we don't know how much we need. But I understand that you have a study that you expect you'll have some results from in, within two years. And it would seem like that would be a good time to talk about affordable housing. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't permit development of that parcel. I'm not saying that we shouldn't permit development in the village, but I'd rather be looking at a specific proposal and be knowing more exactly what we're talking about. 35 acres is a pretty big area. You can get a lot of units on that. I think it's premature to put it in the village and open the gate to very small lot sizes without knowing more specifically how those would be utilized and what kind of open space we would have. And, and I think we have to acknowledge that it may or may not be Mr. Taylor who does the development. Quite likely, it would be someone else. We've talked about a 50-year timeframe for development or a 10-year timeframe. So I'd just like to have something far more specific than just sticking it in the village where who knows what could happen. And in concert, really, with the comprehensive plan, which, under Chapter Six, the Land Use Plan Goals, Principles and Policies, the very first goal is preserve the overall view shed of the county in the, in its unspoiled natural setting, which gives its special character and identity. The fourth goal is preserve and enhance rural agricultural and open spaces. The first principle is to preserve agriculture. The second principle is to preserve scenic values and natural beauty. The third principle is to protect our natural resources, including the view shed. And under that, Item 13 says, ensure that the ridges crest and ridge tops in Rappahannock County remain scenic in nature as a valuable resource to be preserved. So again, I'd like to say, I'm not saying, don't develop this parcel. I'm saying, let's be wise about how we approach it. I think Sperryville is very fortunate that of all of Rappahannock County, we're the ones who are up against the mountains and really do have the most beautiful views. And one of those happens to be on Woodward Road. So it's as important, I think, to have these beautiful views within the village as it is to have them as you're driving along the highways. I think people don't come to Sperryville to see suburbia. And I'd like to be sure that we don't end up with suburbia. And they don't move here to live in suburbia. So I just would ask that we be cautious about how we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that's in the audience before we go to the Zoom? Yes, sir.
Hello, Don Locke, Jackson District. Few quick things. First, I want to thank all the Commissioners, Chairman, for putting this together. And it's been a long time coming. The, first, I guess, let's start with a few small things regarding the library. It's on page 62. I want to point out that in addition to being a repository for books and, and for circulating books, it also provides a few other services that I think should be listed. One is, I think I've met all you before, various times in the Jameson Room, on various occasions. They provide meeting space, which I think is vital to the community. I think that should be listed in there. The other thing is that they also provide internet service, both during business hours, but I think if we go there now, we'll probably find there's somebody in their car with their laptop trying to get internet there. So I think we should mention that because I think, especially now, it's a vital service at the library. We talked a lot about in the comprehensive plan, how many books has been circulated, but I think probably, I mean, those other two things are just as important. With the county, page 62 on recreation, the second, second, second sentence under the title Recreation lists primary recreational uses. I believe that bicycling should be in there. A number of people bike the roads that are community members. And we also bring in a lot of people, a lot of people come in to bike the roads. As was mentioned, the comprehensive plan is looked upon as a planning document. As such, I think, as we look at transportation in the future and transportation plans, we should be looking at bike safety as one of those. And I think by enumerating that, that brings us closer to sort of bringing up those safety concerns. Let's see. Well, also in recreation, while I like the following line within the plan, the undeveloped open nature of the landscape in the county offers endless opportunities for outdoor recreation, including riding, hiking, swimming and canoeing. I love that line. I do want to point out, though, it's not a universal truth for all citizens in the county. Whenever you're talking about private recreation or public recreation on private lands, it tends to be a, within the model of, you know, if you know and who you know. We open up our property, our farm, to lots of people who've come to, to run on trails we have, to hike, to birdwatch, but it's not open to everybody. We don't know everybody. Not everybody's our neighbor. And so I think we, I think that should be pointed out just because whenever we rely on the fact that we have all these wonderful lands to draw on, we forget sometimes that some people are not able to access those. They don't know those people. For whatever reason, they may not have access. I think it's sort of, not to let us off on the hook to provide that there's actually public access to public lands that are available for recreation. Farmland preservation on page 80. It lists that funding now is through the General Fund as well as general contributions from the Rappahannock County Conservation Association, as well as from, well, from the RCCA primarily. Oh, yeah, there you go. Almost entirely from the Rappahannock County Conservation Alliance, which holds an annual fundraiser for that purpose. I believe they disbanded in 2014. They did actually give the money that they held to the Rappahannock, or sorry, for the Currzer Fund for Rappahannock County Conservation. So there is still a funding source there, but we should probably list the Currzer Fund as a potential funding source. Although I think we should still give credit to the RCCA for all the work that they did over, over that time, I just wanted to sort of make that current. So didn't say like that was a dead document. Also on farmland preservation, I think there lies an important connection between conservation easements and our, and our composite index that should be listed in there. Unlike lands that are in the land use program, either through the county land use or through the ag enforcement districts, which are valued at highest and best use when it comes to the composite index, conservation easements, including those of the FPP, are actually looked at as their land use values, which has a, a benefit to our composite index. Unfortunately, it's usually not enough to sway it, but as we have more and more conservation easements, it is something we should be looking at. So it should be listed, I think, as, in that chapter. Regarding the, the village maps, I love maps. I've been, I've been a lover of maps for a long time and I've used them a lot. They are very powerful tools to make things clearer and to handle complex topics when they're done well. Unfortunately, I think when they're done poorly, they can sometimes be extraneous at best and they can muddy the water at worst. I think, Mr. Connick, you've mentioned that as far as looking at those aerials and saying, does this really show what we want to show? In looking over, can we actually bring up the Amesville one? That would be great. Because that's the one I know the best because I live in Amesville. Hence the accent of this one. If it's done poorly, I think it can, it can muddy the water. So here, so first of all, I guess if you go all, scroll all the way down to the bottom so we can see the legend, you know, so we know this is aerial image. We look at the data, what it's cited, cited. We don't really get a lot of information. We see that there's a shapefile that's been created, a polygon, which is done by hand. And it doesn't actually list any data that it's looking at in order to make that polygon. So right away, the map really doesn't tell me much, except for that there's a blob, polygon on an aerial imagery. Okay, so that's a starting point. You know, looking at the text itself, I've got two conflicting things here. One is that I have a map that shows Stewart Fields there, it shows, you know, it shows Hackleys, it shows the post office. Not a lot of Amesville. When I read the text for the Village of Amesville, what does Village of Amesville entail? It has four churches. I see four churches, none of them are in the box. Post office is in there. Fire department, not in the box. Three cemeteries, not in the box. The text verbatim says the village is accessed by routes 211, 642 and 611. 642 is there, 211 is there, 611 is not there. And then it lists a carpet shop. So Early's, Mayhew's also listed as not by name, but they're not in the box. So really, I'm left with sort of what is this really showing me here? It seems, if the idea is that we don't want to open it up to interpretation, it seems like having a description, a text of the, of what the village is, that is incredibly broad, we'd have to bring this map out quite a bit more, you know, the, the Guff about description sort of mentioned. But most of what's, like I said, most of what's in there is actually not on that map. So I think that's a problem. Looking at it, it seems like, reading over the document, it also says that in Sperryville, we're considering R5 zoning as part of the village. Here, we're not considering R5. Most of that, if you were to expand it actually to what the village says, you'd find that there's, that most of the development potential actually is in the R5, which is that mainly, which is currently being developed. So I think, you know, if we're thinking about, if we want to have some idea of how that's going to be developed at R5 and want to have some ability to help manage that as part of the village, it sort of needs to be in the village map. I'm not saying I want it developed, but I'm saying that that actually gives us more power to say what is being done with it and how it's being done and whether there's clustering and what the setbacks are. So I think that I would, I would look at, I would look at that and I would try to make it consistent. The, yeah, overall, the sort of looking at this map just left me sort of flummoxed with what it was supposed to be telling me. So I think that the maps are a great idea. I think perhaps if it's based on zoning, I think we should probably put the zoning later on there because that's what it's based on. Once again, the shapefile doesn't tell me what it's based on at all. It really doesn't give me any, any clues as far as, okay, within that blob, what is actually the zoning of different parcels? What is the priority of how things are going to mesh with what is the village? You know, we're not even talking in this about the other side of the, the other side, which is also historically part of the Amesville Village. It was probably a lot before my time because I was here after the roads, but there should have been a garage over there, Lou Jenkins Garage. There should have been other things, obviously part of the village. So anyway, it seems like I know this one the best, but I'm sure if I looked at the Sperryville one long enough, I would also realize that there's some inconsistencies there. I'm a little bit worried about what I just heard about why that R5 was added to, was added to Sperryville because it seems like that's exactly what we're trying not to do. We're trying to look at what is the, what do we want as a county as far as the development and not who owns what land, who would want to include what land within, within the zoning area. Yeah, looking at this, I would, I would say, really what I'm being told here is developers, two things. Why they said, if I want to get around this, I'm going to look at the text and not the map. And I'm going to say that they're inconsistent or congruent. The second thing it tells us is that you're really trying to say you don't want any development in Amesville. Because most of that is, Stewart Field is a large portion of that. Most of that is actually not stuff that's going to be developed or really set for development. Like I said, most of that is actually other places in the R5. Anyway, I, I think it's a great idea. I think really, if you're going to set maps in here, they need to be specific. And there also should be some discussion as the county, there should be more discussion about what do we want to actually have in these maps? Are we going on pathland uses? Are we going on zoning? Are we going on, you know, the field of these villages and how we want them to function as villages? Currently, I mean, you know, I love Amesville, but I mean, as a village, it doesn't have a village. It has a bunch of things that are listed on here that aren't even in the village area. So anyway, what do we want to look at? That's what this is, that's what the comprehensive plan is all about, is what do we want these things to look at, look like? And really, I don't see these maps are really further in that interest at all. They really, really just sort of make it more confusing. I think it's a slightly less muddy version of the aerial maps. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Tom Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tom Taylor and the board, Piedmont District. I've got two friends now. I've got Sally and I heard Leslie even died here. So I've got two friends. I, when I made my request about the R5, we do happen to have some R5 there, but it seems like it's been 30 years ago and it's got, you know... like it's been 30 years ago, and it's got, you know, it's, it's close to the sewer line in Sperryville. Actually, it's on it in a couple of different directions. We're on the south side of 211. We have frontage on 211. We have frontage up Wicker Road, and we have access to the sewer, one acquired and one offered as a, you know, for free if we really wanted it from a friend. I didn't go at this from a personal standpoint. I looked at it, and I'm not the only one that owns some R5 zoning on, in Sperryville on the sewer line, and there's some other folks. It seems like my name's come up a couple of times, and I'm, it's...
It's because you have friends.
Yeah, I've got some friends. And actually, I consider them friends, and they're, they're great people. And I do like the discord. I think it's great. I think it's a good statement to where we're at, that we can actually talk about this and have different opinions on these things, and be able to express them. Thanks to y'all to come and let us express it. My point was that it was, it was so close into Sperryville, my track, and there's some other tracks that are really close into Sperryville that are R5, had been mentioned tonight, that I thought it just seemed to be a natural fit for the sewer system. I've been told that the sewer system runs at about 50% capacity, and what could do it? I know that it's, I know that it's old, and maybe that wasn't good, maybe that wasn't good information, but I took it to be good information. And, and I know the system, you know, I'm, we have property on the system now that we're paying the DUs for. I'm expecting to pay some bills down the road to upgrade the system. And I've been told that it's, maybe it's a good thing to have a little development down the road. I don't expect any development. I've had people approach me about trying to develop it, I resisted, and will continue to. As far as the history of the property, it was in my family for a long time, and it was out of the family for a while, and now it's back in, and my children will inherit it. Then I, you know, I, they enjoy it as much as I do. I farm it. The best eight days of the year of my life is on that tractor and baler making hay. And I enjoy it too much. I could have sold lots off. I've been awful to sell a lot off. I can't do it, because it's, I think it would, you know, I just wouldn't like it. So, and I am considerate of my neighbors. I've always tried to be considerate of all my neighbors, everywhere that, everywhere we are. I've gone out of my way to try to be a good neighbor, try to fix up whatever we do, try to offer help if necessary, and I'm sure that other folks do the same thing, because that's kind of the Rappahannock way, be a good neighbor. So, but I do think that it, it was R5 zoning when we bought the property years ago, and I'm not asking for a zoning change. I'm assuming there's a process for that. I'm not up to date on this, but I'm assuming if you wanted to develop it, you would have to go through maybe a public hearing. You would have to have all these studies and surveys done, and, and I don't, and I don't see that happen either anytime soon, because you have to have demand, and we don't have so much demand in the county. So I appreciate what y'all are doing, and I hope you'll consider keeping the R5 in, in the, in the village, and I hope that, I hope it's on the map. I haven't looked at the map. I don't know if it's, you know, I know at the meeting I was at, they were going to add it to the map, so I hope it is there if it does get approved. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Okay, do we have anybody on the Zoom? Oh, Diane, it's all right, let me see.
Why is that not surprising?
Well, I looked, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting.
You didn't put me on the limit of five minutes, so, I'll have to wait to be in.
There's nothing, and it's just a little.
Well, yeah. Thank you, everybody, for everything you've done all the many months. Yesterday, I drove through Amesville, and I saw the Amesville sign, the fire department sign that says, "Wear masks, stop COVID-19." And we have a couple of board members who are not in maps and a couple other men, but anyhow, I guess Amesville, the fire department feels like masks are a good thing. A couple of little changes that I saw, I have not read the whole thing, but map number 17, I think that's the historic district map maybe. Seems to me they have Benvenue and the Flint Hill Baptist Church perhaps upside down. Where it says Benvenue, I believe that's more likely to be Flint Hill, and where it says Flint Hill Baptist Church, that's more likely to be Benvenue. Although there is an old Baptist church there, and that may well be designated as an historic building. And I find it strange that all of that area between what they call Benvenue and Flint Hill is an historic district. Does anybody know anything about how that came to be?
Yeah, it was. It was made one about, I don't know, five or 10 years ago. Not that long.
Is it all one person's property?
No.
It's designated by the Historic Society?
What happened was, when I got on the commission, I looked at that section, and I looked at the Virginia, I think it's, Historic Resources Commission. And they have a website, and they had a map, and the, the conference of plan only had about three or four sites that were listed, but on their website, there were all these.
Are there a number of houses in there?
Well, there are some, there are some places, some of these little dots are just like, for example, Mount Salem. Mount Salem's just the church. And I think Phil Irwin's house is on there, it's just Phil's house. But there are other places like Laurel Hills and Benvenue is a, is a town of Washington.
And Sperryville.
Sperryville is, is actually had the, the parks of it have been designated by the Department of Historic Resources as a historic district. So all this was updated, and we generated the map, because there wasn't a map before. And the significance of the map, which hopefully we can correct, your nice catch there on Benvenue, the significance of it is when you get to parts that have been added to the comp plan about wireless and telecommunications and solar facilities, one of the considerations about how stringent the camouflageing and all that has to be, is whether or not the proposed facility is within the viewshed of any of these historic sites. But we didn't have any map of any of it, so there was really no way to do that. So that's been corrected, and I would have to say that's a pretty significant, there's that, plus the scenic byways that came from VDOT, and those are added. So if you're within a historic district, or within a viewshed of a historic district, or a historic site that's part of their designation, or you're on a designated scenic byway, then you have to meet a higher standard of, to get approval.
Well, yeah, I understood that all the little blue dots have probably been designated by the Virginia Historic Society or some like...
The Department of Historic Resources. And there's apparently an application procedure and all that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, that's an awfully big district that shows up there from Benvenue down to what they're calling the Flint Hill Baptist Church. That's like, must be acres and acres and acres and acres, and miles and...
Well, it's pretty much, it's pretty much that whole road.
So that's in the Virginia Historic Designation Book, huh?
Well, I haven't seen the actual book, I've seen it online.
Well, that's interesting, yeah. So you have a handful of houses that have been, or properties that have been designated historic, and we got Sperryville and Washington in this large area, okay?
I'll just tell you that we, we, there was a proposal to use every, use the Historic Society as a huge list, and we had a meeting, we discussed this, and we, we did some talk about putting all those sites into the comp plan, and this was the, the resolution was just the ones that have been officially designated. So that's, that's what we did, and that's the origin of the map.
Well, maybe PD9 can change Benvenue and Flint Hill.
Right, I'm sure they will.
And I'm not sure that's the Flint Hill Baptist Church. I don't know the name of that church. It sits at that intersection of Rexley Road and Benvenue Road.
It's a Baptist church.
That may be the one, that may be the one that's intended there, if it has some other name. Okay, thank you. Map 15E is a map in the Woodville area, and although the aerial map of Woodville is correct, this map shows a Shiloh Baptist Church in the wrong place.
Shows what?
Shiloh Baptist Church. That should be up there on...
Oh, the other side, right on the north side.
Yeah, up on the hill, up on the hill. You can see it in the, because it's a cemetery up there too. And then, the lady before me spoke of the general commercial plan, that's map 18.
You have one in there.
Well, I was curious about there, if you would scroll it up a little bit, please. A goodly portion of it is just a straight line. It doesn't follow a road, it doesn't follow a lot line, it doesn't follow a stream. How would one ever know if they were in or out of the general commercial zone, when you just have a straight line like that? Well, then I suggest that you all look at that map again. I mean, commercial, general commercial is a pretty big deal. And one would think that it should follow boundaries of something. I know voting precincts do. They follow roads or streams. And in the old days, the voting precincts didn't. We just had very long lines like that, and nobody really knew. But this is, this reminds me of that, and it would seem to me that that should be looked at and thought about a little bit.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Can I question, which line is your questioning again?
The red, the solid red one.
Which one, on the south side of 211?
Wherever there's a solid, straight, red line. It's not...
On the south side of 211 or the north?
South side, north side, and the west side. Did that answer your question?
I mean, I can tell you the answer. The answer is it followed the back of that track that's clear, because that, that's already zone commercial. So, it actually is zone commercial now, and it wasn't included in the map, so when we got up to there, the question was to go straight up where people are going down the Rock Mill's Road, and the consensus was to do it the way it's done. But that's why the lines were examined.
Well, it could present a very difficult situation.
I want to just also clarify, it's not a rezoning map. It's just a map that designates the future possible commercial area. Some of these are zoned already commercial, and some are not.
I understand that. I just think that it could present a problem for future boards and commissions with some kind of application. Quite frankly, I think that line that, across from the co-op, I do not believe that land perks, and I think that's why nothing's ever happened there. But I could be mistaken about that. That used to be what I remember hearing. But anyhow, I just think that you might be leaving yourself wide open if you just have a red line, straight red line, nowhere to nowhere, just there. And I would think that you wouldn't want to deal with that. Okay. Thought it was curious to respond to what Don Locke said. He was talking about villages, Amesville. And when you look at, and of course, that's the leading edge for growth. That's where most growth has already occurred in this county, and that's probably where the demand will be in the future. So, but when you look at the maps, these are the tax maps around Amesville, and you look at all of the lots there, lots and lots of lots, and these are subdivisions that have separate tax maps with lots of lots in them. Just thought it was curious, because he brought it up, that Amesville has the tiniest, it's about less than one square mile, if you use the chart at the bottom, at the village, yet. It's probably in the area of the county that's going to be most stressed in the future, and already has enormous number of lots that have houses on them. But mostly what I want to talk about is growth, and specifically Sperryville, because that's where I live. And I would not be in favor of seeing the mines drawn around villages that bring R5 properties into the villages, because whenever you bring something into a village, you have the potential, as I understand it, to somewhere down the road, to rezone to smaller lot sizes, be it two acres or one acre or whatever. So I think that we need to, or you need to reevaluate these maps, because it's not just Sperryville that has agricultural land being shown as potential or village land by our comp plan, it's all of them, except Amesville. Growth brings increased costs. Sometimes people think that if we have more houses, we have more tax dollars. Well, we do have more tax dollars with more houses, but we also have more expenses. Expenses like fire and rescue, expenses like law enforcement, particularly schools. The, in 19, I mean, in 2016, the cost per pupil at our schools was almost $14,000 per pupil. That was four years ago. If we brought 50 more kids into the school because of growth, multiply that figure by 50, and how much more would it cost budget-wise to run our schools? And I know you know that Rappahanna gets very little back from the state and federal government towards the cost of education. So if you were to add 50 students, you would be looking at a large increase in cost, not just for things like emergency services and law enforcement and trash and that kind of thing, but specifically for schools. So you're talking about increasing taxes significantly. A few houses bring in a little money, but they can create a lot of costs. When I think about Sperryville specifically, and increased growth in Sperryville, your map worries me. The largest, thinking of traffic in Sperryville, the largest increase in traffic in this county in the past 10 years has been, according to the chart in your comprehensive plan, has been the area from Massey's Corner to Route 231, the FD Valley Road. Now, your charts show the increase in traffic for all various sections of the county, but the largest single one is that section from Massey's Corner out to Sperryville, through Sperryville, down to Route 231.
Right in front of your house?
Well, that's true. But also, that is significant, because we already have a problem in Sperryville with traffic, especially in that corner there. You should see what happens there. You should go up there and stand on the corner and watch what happens when the tractor trailers come through. It's just amazing, and they have to get all the way over into the other lane. To, to say that growth in Rappahanna should take place where there's a sewer system is just not right. Yes, we have a sewer system, but with growth, we're going... Yes, we have a sewer system, but with growth, we're going to see increase in traffic. We already have chaos there. With growth in Sperryville, especially up 211 towards the park, it's conceivable that your traffic would be so congested that soon you'd have to four-lane that highway. It's already a mess at Shaw's, at Service Station, and Headmasters now, especially on weekends. So with increased growth, I can just see costs doubling, more than that. The other thing about Sperryville that is in your...
Excuse me, Dave. You've been going on 15 minutes.
Okay. Well, because you were answering some of my questions, and I was showing you...
Just telling you.
I was showing you some of the things that were incorrect on your charts.
Reminding you, you've been going on 15 minutes.
Wait, you're going to cut me off?
Nope.
Okay.
Not yet.
In your, in your comprehensive plan, under Water Resources, in the next to the last paragraph, you say, "Many drought events have been accompanied by periods of unusually hot weather, which in combination with what seems to be increasing thunderstorm events, as opposed to gentle rains, have exacerbated their effect on the water supply and stream flow." "The combination of all of these elements has led to serious concerns as to whether the weather supply, the water supply, will in fact continue to meet the county's needs." That doesn't just apply to Sperryville, but we know in Sperryville that we have a diminished water supply. As for the sewer, and why we should have development there, when that sewer was put in, and this is a quote, "It was a no-growth, was stressed in the state and federal grant applications. The sewer system was intended to correct an existing health hazard." A.H. Passier, Director of the Enforcement of State Water Control Board, told the Board of Supervisors that "The system is intended to serve the designated area in Sperryville with a sewage problem and is intended to be a no-growth system. No-growth was stressed in the state and federal grant applications. The sewer was intended to correct an existing health hazard. No local funding, no local tax dollars, not a penny of local money was spent to the design and to build the sewer system." "State officials said at that time that such a funding windfall will never happen again." So when it was built, it was built to cure a problem. Sperryville was considered the worst waste place in Virginia, the fifth worst. A polluted place, a polluted town in the state of Virginia. And that is why they made us put this system in, but then the federal and state government paid for it. The Board of Supervisors were also told that it'd have a life expectancy of 35 to 40 years. It's now about 35 years old. This all brings me back to growth. I'm not happy about seeing five-acre tracts or 25-acre tracts of agricultural land put in our village map. And I think you've heard enough today to hear about other problems with some of the other villages and some questions that you may well want to look at these maps again. Personally, I think you ought to delete them. Because I think once you put a line out there, your developers are going to say, "Oh, look, let's go up there. We can develop." And I think it's a red flag to have these maps. We don't need them. We know that we say we can develop around villages and nowhere else. So why do you need to put a line around the village?
Okay, 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. You're so generous.
Thank you. I think you said generous.
I beg your pardon.
All right, anybody else?
I beg your pardon. What did you say?
He asked me what you said. I said, "I think you said generous."
Oh, thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience? Want to be heard, Mr. Mackler? And I apologize, Mr. Mackler. It's unproven in every meeting, just about like Ken Kettin. In public, there are two members of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'm Ron Mackler from Jackson District. I just wanted to sort of correct a misconception that was just performed as far as the educational system goes and the cost of educating our students. She used the figure of $14,000 and sort of inferred that if we add more students to the system, that the cost will increase by 14,000 per each student, and that's not true. That cost is very high per student in Rappahannock because your administrative costs and your capital costs are what they are, irregardless of the number of students. And our student numbers are way down. So you take that low number of students and you put it into a large figure, and that's when we come up with that cost per student. But more students are really not going to, actually, we're going to get more money coming in, and our cost per student is going to go down, and financially, we are going to be better in shape, in better shape if we can get more students into our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter? Yes, sir. Mr. Connor, members of the commission, thank you for your diligent efforts. When Ms. Bruce was speaking, I thought, I was saying about a lot of things she said, and certain of them I agree with, certain I don't. But there's one apparent problem in the county now that I don't know has been addressed. And that's on the commercial district, and where it's located between Sperryville and Little Washington. It's fine to have a commercial district, but one of the problems you have is you don't have sewer and water to it. I thought originally when, and this has been a discussion of mine over the years, about the development of growth. I'm not pro-growth, but I think you've got to change things to make it economic in today's society so everybody can survive. You're going to have to have, you're going to have to make amendments that you don't like. You're going to have to have clustered housing if you want to have low-income housing. The low-income housing could be solved pretty quickly in the private sector, I believe. But the main issue I see is the town of Little Washington Sewer, and I didn't know this, recently is not allowed out of the boundary of Little Washington. It's running at a deficit, pretty big deficit, my understanding. And if you could, or think about it on the future, br- emerging the sewer, so Sperryville and Washington into one sewer organization so they can look at it and also try to figure out how you can get the sewer system from Washington to the commercial district, then the commercial district will become more viable, and you could gain some tax dollars from there and have the increased income for the county. Right now, without those services, you've had the commercial district there for probably for 40 or 50 years. And only two buildings I know that have been gone in, and I guess there are three. There has been State Electric, the Rappahannock, Atlantic Canyon Bank, and the Baldwin Service Station. But that's, and I think one lot sold. But you should look at trying to see how you could develop or get water and sewer to the commercial district of the county. And that would, I think that would help the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anybody else here in the audience wants to speak? Okay, has threatened, there's several sometimes. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to be here? What? Okay, how many people are listening by now? Three? Well, glad we went all night. Okay. Yes, sir?
Actually, it was not listed, the Zoom was not actually listed in the, in the paper when the announcement went out, so I think that might be some of your problem.
Who else?
It wasn't listed as an opportunity to go to the...
Well, it was on Board of Directors. Anyway, is there anybody else that wants to speak? First call, Rappahannock. Second. Also want to correct another mistake, well, another supervisor showed up, so we have three supervisors in the audience, and one up here, so all but one are here. Thank you for coming. All right, I'm going to declare, is there somebody else who wants to speak? Ms. Bruce?
You said that you could receive some written communications and you're going to hire...
Oh, right. Well, I am going to discuss this, but I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're just going to discuss, mention this. But you're right. I'll do it while the public hearing is still open. I think we got four different comments that were submitted. Then I'm going to ask that they be appended to the minutes, and I'll just tell you basically who they're from and what they are about. We have a, and I think they all were received either today or maybe yesterday, but in the last two days. We have a two-page letter from Jill Grace Jefferson on Swidmore Hollow Road in Sperryville. And her comment, is everybody on the commission receiving? Okay, well, I'll just summarize it. Her comment is that we should step up the goal stated in the comprehensive plan for broadband by 2030. That that's not sufficient, and that it should be advanced to 2023. So that's her comment, or the sum and substance of it. We have another two-page letter dated today from Martin Woodard, also of Piedmont District. And he raises a variety of questions, most of which we've heard here tonight, including the one about Amosville, about the maps. And questioning whether or not the maps need more, need more work. And asks us to revisit them and so forth. Mr. Bob Trafton, who was also from Woodard Road in Sperryville, he doesn't think that there's adequate detail on addressing night skies and the effect of light pollution. And finally, Mr. Richard Price, which, I don't see on here where he's, Mr. Price is from. He's also concerned about the timeline stated for improvements of internet, cellular, broadband service. So those are the four comments that were received in writing. Right? I think there ain't nothing getting late, then I did, okay. So that's it. I'm going to ask one more time. Anybody else want to be heard? Okay, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. And again, want to thank each and every one of you for coming, and those of you who spoke, thank you for your comments. Those of you who listened, I hope you learned something, and thank you for coming. So now, commissioners, I guess first, if you want to, we can discuss some of these comments. I'd like to have a motion made on the floor to do one thing or another, either to approve it or to recommend it, and send it on to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation, or, or not?
I would like to make a recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Coler?
I prepared a small statement to go with it.
Okay.
We're fortunate, Rappahannock is home to a good community of people, and still retains the natural beauty of its mountains, valleys, and natural pistons. The foresight of early county leaders kept Rappahannock from becoming like everywhere else. Fifty years ago, our first zoning was implemented, and it served us well. Things are changing, and we are overdue for updates. In all these years, this is the first time Rappahannock has attempted to draw a line defining the villages other than the zoning districts that were shown on zoning maps. In the west end of the county, many small businesses sprang up to serve the Turks, heading to and from Shandor National Park on 211. And the county established a narrow highway commercial zone along Route 211 from the crossroads of Sperryville to the park. With the advent of Route 66, the park traffic faded, as did many of the businesses. Now we have in our draft plan a semi-hard line shape of the villages. Without GPS, these lines tend to weave in and out of parcels. Along 211 toward the park, many properties are proposed to be split, zoned, village something, while also being rural residential and conservation. There are three zonings across them. Most people, I think, cannot tell exactly where the line is based on the current map. While the intentions are absolutely good, it is critical to define exactly what the county wants to see developed within these lines before we set them in stone. So what is it we are after? What does the large polygon signify over Amosville, Flint Hill, Woodville? The plan makes statements about Amosville, noting the number of churches and businesses and fire hall, but most of these are not in the Amosville map as it is shown. And in particular, Sperryville. Do we really want a village that is 2.7 miles long and 1/32 to 1/16 mile wide? The devil in this proposal is this. The maps are moving forward very fast, with no clear plan as to the eventual outcome. Exactly what will be developed along 211? What about availability of drinking water? What about traffic? Is the sewer adequate? Do the current residents of Sperryville and Rappahannock County as a whole want this? Are we opening up a zoning question that current or future property owners finding themselves outside the line ask to be inside the line? Or perhaps sued to be inside the line? Can we afford to fight these battles? At this time, there is no battle, but the drawing of a line in the sand will create one. The Sperryville sewer was originally built for the sole purpose of rectifying the dumping of raw sewage into the river. It was not built as a future growth garden. We have been told there is existing infiltration of groundwater from unknown locations into this sewer system. Will this get worse? Could the leaks work in reverse and begin leaking outside of the system, creating a whole new pollution problem? What is the age and lifespan of the existing facility? Apparently 35 years, and we have reached that limit. Can it be expanded, or will a new system eventually be required, particularly if we add more growth? Before we create new maps, we should study this more carefully and determine exactly what is needed and wanted by the citizens of Rappahannock, carefully considering options for the entire county, and define what we are creating boundaries for. Let's not be hasty in creating maps for developers. Our current zoning available land is ample for the time being, and our zoning maps are adequate. It seems a study group, perhaps with outside assistance, might be a valid idea of public hearings or fire hall meetings for public participation and input as we desire in the comprehensive plan. This is too important to color in on an aerial photo and be stuck with for the rest of returning. Mr. Chairman, based on the questions raised, I make the following motion. The Planning Commission hereby deletes the proposed village maps denoted as Maps 15A through 15E. through 15E from the new draft comprehensive plan, and either now or in the future authorize this study to be done on the best way to define our villages to allow for growth while continuing to preserve Rappahannock County for the future and move this plan forward without those maps. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion that's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Fraser, you want to add something to that?
Yeah, for the interest of the public, Commissioner Henry and I are waiting to present the map and the gathering, so I can show it. Turn it on. Switch.
Come on, you're an electrician, you know how this stuff works.
Sorry about that. All right, back to the beginning. Commissioner Henry and I had, had pushed to have the boundaries of Amosville actually delineated properly, but we were voted down, so you have what you have by a majority vote, not a unanimous. But to address some of the concerns that Mr. Coler brought up, first off, the chairman of the Water and Sewer Authority told us to take in a growth potential there. We're not going on something that we just felt we didn't. We were told that by supposedly the authority. The authority of the authority, the chairman, who's been there a number of years. And as far as the reverse of groundwater leaking in or the sewer system leaking out, it's a gravity flow system, and it's not going to leak going uphill. It can't do that, it's a, it's a question of physics there. So I don't even know why that's in your, your question. But I got the floor, sir. The, the problem is, these are comprehensive plan maps, these are not the zoning maps. The zoning maps would have to have the detail that you're concerned about, not these maps. So you're actually premature in your, your questions that you have, where you're concerned. These are not, this, this is not the map that you should be concerned about, this is not that map. And you should know that. You should know that this is not that map that you should have concerns over, and you should know that a gravity flow system is not going to leak going uphill. I don't even know why you made a motion like that, sir, to start with. So those are my, my observations and comments on this motion.
Okay, anybody else want to be?
God, I've got something to say.
Mr. Henry?
Planning Commission's worked for decades, has kind of operated on what's best for the county, and we've had different opinions, but we never got to a political situation of four blocks. And so basically, to me, that Mr. Coler here must be clairvoyant that he wrote up his nice two or three-page proposal here to delete the maps here based upon what was said here tonight. So he was clairvoyant, and knowing what was going to be said there tonight, quickly got a second. So it's clear to me that there was a political group formed here that outlined themselves to change the comprehensive plan, and I think Mr. Conick here, in the very beginning here, when he held up the map from the previous comprehensive plan, that just showed this gigantic geographic area in Sperryville that extended way beyond Woodard Road up to Jones' property, and went into the Plains area of the Miller farm, and then went up to the various Swinler Hollow, and a great distance that showed thousands and thousands of acres. And we've tried to be reasonable and follow practical zoning principles, and recognizing that any type of future growth should happen in the residential and village commercial areas, and residential being defined as the R5, the R2s, and the village residential areas. And what we've been trying to do for decades in this county is to protect the ag area and conservation areas, and to say that really anything that was to be built for growth in this county should go into the areas that we designate as growth areas, and these are the areas. And Mr. Taylor here has taken kids on this property of his, you know, for the last two or three months, and starting with members on the planning commission, and members in the audience, and people who live in Sperryville. It's always interesting to me where people that own a quarter of an acre or something wants to tell a large landowner that he has no rights or limited rights on what he has to do with his property. And if you look at Mr. Taylor's property, 35 acres with sewer on it, that's probably the most valuable residential property in this county by far, the most valuable. And it's, it's his property right, and whether he wants to try to do something next year or pass it on to his kids and let them do something with it in decades to follow, that is prerogative. But we're recognizing that he has an asset here, the community has an asset here, and we're not taking away or giving him anything that he doesn't already have. And with this motion to go away with the maps, it's the wild, wild west. It's the wild, wild west, and anything can go on then in Sperryville until this endless study is started, that will go on, if it gets started, for months and years. You know, we talked about how much groundwater, about the pipes going to lead for the life of the system, and all these things, just to burn up time and tax dollars and everything else. So we've approached this in a very practical manner, to rein in the potential area that could be developed, and to start a talking point for the future, and try to make definitions. And if you go to any town in this state that has zoned in any county, you see the same thing that we're trying to propose to get passed here, nothing different, it's just practical common sense. Now, the R5 was mentioned in Amosville. Well, we only included in Sperryville the areas of R5 that have sewer on it, and there's no sewer in Amosville, so therefore, there's no R5s that we're saying is in the village of Amosville. Now, listening to Mr. Locke here speak, and I was thinking myself, if I would represent it till Hazel, would I say any words much different than what Mr. Locke said? And I probably would say no, because there is a lot of R5 around Amosville. I was amazed how much R5. And if you start defining all of that R5s as the village of Amosville, wow, wow. That is a light open gun for something to happen in Amosville. So I think it's very wise to formulate a map that we did for Amosville at the present time. Now, in the future, that can be tweaked, but there are hundreds and hundreds of acres. How that ever got to the R5 was before my time. So anyway, I think we're trying to do the right thing. I think we're starting to talk about this proposal that Mr. Coler presented, of a shell game, and I'm against it.
Okay, any other--
Yes, sir.
Mr. Light?
Yes, sir. I'm sure a lot of the views have been expressed, I like the idea of that. I think there's a desire to add clarity, where right now there isn't, and, but I think we've, we've backed ourselves into a corner and put ourselves at risk of the most common form of government error, which is that of unintended consequences. And that is, we defined these maps originally not to talk about what was inside the rings, but was to talk about what's outside the ring. Chairman Collins brought this up several times, we want to, and I think Mr. Henry did as well, we want to protect the areas outside the village. What we have created in doing that is a great deal of uncertainty about what we're saying, about what happens inside the village. And we had originally, when I drafted Language, included a statement that we did not mean by drawing these boundaries that we saw any need for rezoning inside the villages or outside the villages. But having taken that language out, we've now left it very unclear what we're saying about our intentions for within the villages. I think, while you could argue, and it has been argued, and I find the argument somewhat compelling, that the broad-based aerial photos are ambiguous, you know, they've been that way since the beginning, and as we've all been discussing, the comprehensive plan has protected us pretty well. So I don't see that we're suddenly creating the wild, wild west by simply keeping it the way it was and allowing ourselves the judgment to define when we're faced with a proposal, to determine what we need and what we say in or around the village. By creating the line, I would argue, it's going to be much harder for us when somebody comes forward with some proposal for something inside the line, to suddenly say, no, that's not what we had in mind, we didn't mean that, we don't want that rezoning. Well, then why did you draw this nice little line and basically put a bullseye on the villages, saying this is where you want the development? I don't think we have given that purpose sufficient attention, and it's the, it's the cause of a lot of questions and concerns that have been raised, and it's our fault for not clarifying our statement about what we are saying about inside the villages. And I think we could either remove the maps until we're ready to make a firmer statement about that, or an alternative that would work in my mind would be to re-encircle the language that says, we're just showing the way the villages are currently zoned, and we don't see any current need for rezoning inside the villages. There's plenty of space for the development that we envisioned, and that was the original intent, that was the original language, and that has just kind of morphed over the development of this draft. So I don't, I don't want, I agree that we shouldn't have a commission, and this is not going to be a, a matter that we can just analyze our way into, but I think we need to be clearer in our statement about what we're saying about what happens inside the, inside the line, otherwise, we're going to be on the, on our heels when somebody comes forward with something. Thank you.
Mr. Shulam, do you want to be heard?
Sure. I think the maps of the villages await to look great.
That's it?
No, I don't like the Amosville map either, it's something that, I remember when we had the R5 included in there, it was humongous. I kind of agree with Mr. Light about including the language, you have seen more clearly the types of zoning that we're looking at inside as well. But I'm not for taking the maps out.
That's it? Yes. Thank you. Ms. Shulam, go ahead.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank very much folks who have come out and spoken tonight. I'm very impressed by how much effort people have put into reading the comprehensive plan and thinking about it.
Excuse me, wait, we're talking about this motion, so let's talk about the motion.
I, I'm talking about that, but I'd like to thank folks for, for being out here, if that's all right. I don't, is that, is that a violate our rules of procedure? All right, thank you. So thank you very much for that, that time and effort that you've put into this. I'd also like to make it clear that I don't believe anybody here is suggesting taking away property rights of anybody by downzoning, except the only place that we're doing that is our suggested changes to the commercial zone, the commercial district, which is a downzoning, or would require a downzoning at least. So, you know, as far as folks in the Sperryville area, I'm very sympathetic to the concern that if a map, if a line is drawn, that, that your property not be on the outside of it, because what does that mean? And that's part of the problem that we're dealing with here. So I would say that every experienced planner that I've spoken to, and every book I'm planning that I've read, all say the same thing. You have to define your vision for the community, you have to agree on what's unique about your community, and what's important to keep and what's important to improve upon. Once you've figured that out, then you can figure out how to get there. This is a first and critical step, and it's the one we haven't done. The village boundary maps we have under consideration are not ready for prime time, in my opinion. We have not clearly defined what these boundaries mean. Are we recommending more intensive development inside the boundaries? And if we are recommending that, why are we recommending that? Do we envision our villages staying basically as they are, anticipating primarily that development already allowed by right? Will go forward in trying to make necessary plans and accommodations for that development by right? Or do we want our villages to become more heavily populated? Or are we just resigned to the belief that we can't stop development, so we just have to do our best to work around it? So we haven't answered those questions, the community hasn't engaged and involved in that, and I think those are things that we need to understand before we start encouraging potential development within our villages. And speaking with my neighbors and listening to some on this commission, I've heard everything from all development in the county needs to be pushed into Sperryville, and we need to encourage more strip development up and down 211, to let us do everything we can to keep our villages and community close to what they are now, the same way our predecessors have managed to do it for the past 200 years. As I've said before, I fully understand the concern that has been raised by the chairman and others expressed for the current. The current comprehensive plan encourages development around the villages only, but that includes large aerial maps that leave open what the definition of around the village means. That is a problem. But just drawing boundaries with no clear definition of goals and parameters only opens us up to uncertainty and lack of control over the outcome. In talking with jurisdictions such as Middleburg, for example, on a incorporated town, they have taken their zoning acts and considered things such as, for example, a commercial area, a zone commercial area that's become rundown. So they state in their comprehensive plan policy in a very clearly articulated way that the area may be considered for future mixed-use developments such as apartments above stores to help revitalize that area. It's very clear, it's very defined, it's not an open-ended, let's just encourage more development. If however, you have vague goals, you risk someone coming in with a much more intensive development, zoning proposal, and as long as they can demonstrate and or help pay for necessary infrastructure, we would have very little basis for controlling that or saying no to it. Think of a three-story office building, or a three-story, you know, four-bedroom housing or whatever, they, if we don't have standards to find that, we have no basis for controlling it. If you wonder, so what might this mean? Not only have we lost potentially the unique charm and value that is our county, you risk having existing taxpayers required to cover the cost of new developments such as needed improvements to the sewer system, roads, water system, et cetera. If you wonder at this, only consider where our taxes are, in New York City or in the rim, in Fairfax County or Rappahannock, where there are more people, infrastructure needs grow exponentially, and taxes go up. Is that really what we want? I don't think it is, and I don't think anybody here is suggesting that's what we want, but we'd better be careful that we don't ask for that, because that may be what we get. It's one thing to say we want to make sure we can accommodate growth that can already be allowed by right, but have we decided that we want to encourage more growth around our villages? Or should we be focusing on continuing to direct new growth to villages because that's where we already have more intensive zoning, village commercial and village residential that already have smaller lot sizes? That currently exists. If we can't fully answer these questions, it's because we haven't considered them, this information hasn't yet been developed. For Sperryville specifically, where the proposed map would go outside the village commercial and village residential zoning areas, some of the fine considerations should be taken, taken into account. The proposal that we have before us is to encourage more growth around the Sperryville sewer system, yet the capacity of access to it is a question of much debate. Although Al Sharp did come and give us some information on that, his, the information we gave has been contradicted by many others who have worked with the system and know a fair amount about it, so I don't think there's a clear answer on that yet. Some suggest tying funds to sewer improvements and new home cook up these, but we don't know how many homes can already be developed by right, we have no build-out studies, and we haven't analyzed the other infrastructure costs of additional homes that might be proposed. We haven't considered the water availability, wells in Sperryville are often problematic. Do we want to encourage new development without thinking through the impact on existing wells? And I appreciate what's been raised that this is not a zoning map, this is a comprehensive plan, but again, when you draw a line and say you can have more intensive development in this area, when somebody comes in with a proposal that generally meets in, it's hard to say no to it. The Thornton Gap entrance to the Shenandoah National Park is one of the main draws of visitors to our county. It is currently zoned highly commercial with a number of uses allowed already by right. Do we simply want to-- We've had very little discussion about whether the line should be drawn around them that are inappropriate, and will that serve the stated purpose of discouraging growth on their outskirts, or simply highlighting areas outside developers might be interested in. The change to the general commercial area near the Quickie Mark would require a downzoning of certain areas and would include new areas stretching along 211 down to Rock Hills Road without really any consideration of the potential impact of this extension on the businesses currently in the town of Little Washington and the surrounding villages. The bottom line is, these maps, in my opinion, are not ready for prime time. They should be pulled from the proposed comprehensive plan. There are too many unintended consequences that can easily flow from hasty and poorly considered lines that are hard to unlock. I had, in fact, supported previously the drawing of boundaries consistently across all the villages to encompass village commercial and village residential with a statement that we find, that we consider zoning in these areas adequate to, as Mr. Light was saying, adequate to accommodate projected growth at this time. This would essentially maintain the status quo while stepping away from the aerial maps that have caused concern to the members of this commission. However, that language was rejected by this commission. I remain willing to support the option to redesign the maps so that all villages have an area that indicates only village commercial and village residential with appropriate warning to maintain the status quo. But without this, I believe these maps are a fundamental flaw in this comprehensive plan proposal, and I cannot support the proposal as they are. I do happen to agree with Mr. Kohler. I did not hold him right in the state in case I'm wondering, but I think he's right. I appreciate that this proposed plan represents many hours of hard work for many, and I applaud the chairman and vice chairman for their efforts in getting it to this point. While far from perfect, it contains many important improvements, and I would like to support it. However, I support Mr. Kohler's amendment, but, uh, motion, but I would also like to suggest an amendment to that, Mr. Kohler, that you consider adding, removing the map 18, which is a commercial zone map, because I think that also has not been properly reserved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have not far afield on what I think we're supposed to be working on. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be general in nature. These maps are not the official maps until the board supervisors adopts such an official map. And, you know, the things that the comprehensive plan are supposed to include are commercial zones, are urban expansion areas. And when we put that in here, then it doesn't make a couple of the planners happy. When we follow what the state code tells us, we must put in a plan, we're told that they're not happy. So I don't know what to do here.
Let's have a vote and move on.
Do you want to get to say something?
Sure.
Well, I want to say right off how disappointing it is to me to hear a motion like this and to hear the comments from some of the commissioners who've been on this commission, some for Mr. Light, for example, came on the commission when, I think, in 2010 or thereabouts, already a year after this old comprehensive plan was supposed, it was already year and default on the five-year review. And for a whole 10 years, nothing, I mean, nothing, N-O-P-H-I-N-G, has been done about this issue of the maps or the lack of maps. Mr. Kohler's been on the commission for three, two, three years. This has been discussed repeatedly. He hasn't come up with anything, except now an idea to have some study group studying. Well, I don't know who's going to be on the study group. We've been discussing the issues...well, the commission started this discussion before I even got on here, back last year. We've been discussing the issue of the maps. We must have had four or five work sessions at which different maps were brought in here, including Amosville, Mr. Locke, and others who were concerned about that. Mr. Woodard expressed some concern about the change, the differences between what's in the text and what's on the map. We hashed it out, and we decided by a majority to include these maps and only include the existing village residential areas and village commercial areas. Is the, whatever shape you said, polygon or octagon or whatever that shape is, for either place, is that appropriate? Probably. It's not entirely appropriate, and probably it has some deficiencies, but it's the minimum of what, and it only reflects what the current zoning is. Not one member of this commission, Ms. Ishin's been on here for how long, a year and a half? Not one of you came in with a different map. Not one of you came in with a different proposal. Not one of you came in with a different idea of where to draw the lines or how to draw the lines. You waited until, I guess, the last meeting and brought this up, and are, in my opinion, just trying to preclude the adoption of this plan. I want to address some of these specific comments that have been made, that the information that Alex Sharp brought us in May at my invitation, P.S., this comprehensive plan has been...the words that are in there about the Water and Sewer Authority are the exact same language that's been in the plan since 1985. The exact same language that basically said nothing, except there's a water and sewer, or there's, excuse me, there's a sewer system in Sperryville that was built in whatever year it was built in. We don't anticipate any...that's what it said when I got here, when I got a hold of the plan. We don't anticipate any capital requirements or improvements to it in the next five years. Now, at the 11th hour and 59th minute, everybody's coming in to, oh, the Sperryville sewer system is right approaching its 35-year useful life. Well, that's not what Alex Sharp said. Oh, the sewer system was only designed for the existing places. Well, P.S., that's not what the comprehensive plan ever said before, and two, that's not what Alex Sharp told us. Now, we're hearing for the first time tonight that what Alex Sharp, the chairman of the Water and Sewer Authority, told us in our May meeting has been contradicted. By who? I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it until I heard it tonight. I haven't heard anybody contradict what Alex said. He said they were running at about 50 or 60% capacity. There was enough on the system for about another 75 to 100 to be used. That's what he said. So if it's been contradicted, I don't know by who, or when, or what they know, and to bring that up, a member of the...if somebody in the audience wants to bring something like that up, great, but for a commissioner to bring it up with no evidence, no letter, no statement from anybody, I think it's really irresponsible, I have to say. Really irresponsible. To say that, as was just said, that these proposed maps invite, quote, "open-ended development," unquote, is nonsense. What's inviting open-ended development is no maps. If you knew or read, took the time to read the state code or any authority on zoning law and practice, what does it say in the state code where it says, COP 15.2-2223, comprehensive plan to be prepared and adopted, scope and purpose? It says, "In the preparation of a comprehensive plan, the commission shall make careful and comprehensive surveys and studies of existing conditions and trends of growth and of the probable future requirements of its territory and inhabitants. The comprehensive plan shall be made with the purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the territory, which will, in accordance with present and probable future needs and resources, best promote the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the inhabitants." That's what it says in the code. And so now, we shouldn't have any maps? We haven't had any maps for 30 years, and as a result of the fact that we just have some vapid language, that, well, growth sort of ought to be, should kind of be coordinated, directed in the direction of the villages wherever they are, what have we seen over the past 35 years? As I look around, the audience besides me and Phil and Al Henry and five or six other people, I don't see a whole lot of people that have been here 35 years, but I'll tell you what I've seen. I've seen continuous expansion and growth and subdivision and hacking up of farms into little lots, into 25-acre lots, take the Lyle Farm. It was an 1,100-acre farm. It's now all hacked up into 50-acre pieces. Why? Because there's no plan in the plan. There's no maps in the plan. There's nothing but this vapid language that, oh, the future development and growth should be directed toward the villages. But when push comes to shove, there's no actual meat on that skeleton. There's no implementing provisions. There never have been. And the result is that the county is changing. The county is becoming all chopped up into little pieces with no plan, everywhere, in the agriculture districts. That's the primary purpose of the plan. It says, the primary principle, which Ms. Pierce, my predecessor, wrote and put in this plan when it was done, I think, in either 1998 or '09 or the 2004 edition, that we shouldn't follow the example of our neighbors to the east. And yet, that's exactly what we're doing. We're allowing the county to be developed in a completely haphazard and piecemeal way that doesn't follow any plan. And the primary reason for it is, there's no maps in the plan. There never happened any maps in the plan. The comprehensive plan is, is, and has been a joke, and the proof of it is that when this commission considers special exception permits and special use permits, and when the Board of Zoning Appeals considers them, nobody ever, ever brings up the plan. Because why? There's nothing in it. There's nothing specific in it. And that's the problem that we're dealing with now. And so we're going to make a stab at it by putting these maps into the plan. And as I already said, the purpose of the maps is not, as it was just improperly and erroneously stated, that it's to promote some kind of development inside the lines. The purpose is to delineate the areas that we're talking about at various places in the plan where growth should be directed, so that it doesn't splatter all over the whole rest of the county where it's currently happening. So I think this is, I mean, I appreciate some of these concerns, but I really question the sincerity with which they're put forward, and I don't say that lightly.
That's right.
I don't say it lightly, but I think it would be a tremendous mistake to stall this plan and send it back to the drawing board or not forward it on with these maps the way they're drawn. And if you don't like the way the maps are drawn, then it's time to do our next step after we do this comprehensive plan, which is to reexamine the zoning ordinance and reexamine those maps, because those maps are the very basis of these maps. So whichever way the vote goes, and whatever the Board of Supervisors does when this is handed over to them, you can make your same arguments to them, and if they leave the maps on, they might as well not approve the plan, because without the maps, you've got nothing, absolutely nothing. So those are my views. Does anybody else want to speak on this issue? If not, I call the question.
Yes, Chairman, I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Light.
I guess I have a question. I'd like to know how these maps would change anything about the lot property, and I would just also...
On the lot property?
On the lot property that you brought up. And I would also just request that you refrain from impugning motives for me or any of the other commissioners.
I didn't impugn anybody's motives.
Well, yes, you did.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. So, and I want to point out that...
Well, Mr. Light, you've been on the commission, like I said, for 10 years. If you see all of these inadequacies, where have you been all the time? Why didn't you bring it up? Why didn't you study it? Why didn't you come forward with an argument proposal for maps?
May I have the word, as you've already granted? Personally, I'm not having issues with the maps. I'm having issues with the language that's been used to describe the maps. And frankly, since you brought it up, you changed the meaning of what I wrote. We agreed in a work session. Our writing language that said that the current zoning is adequate for future development in the villages. That was the language. I sent it. You revised it. You told me, didn't change it substantively, it was just a tweak, and you totally changed it, sir, and I'm sorry I didn't notice it, but don't tell me that I'm bringing something up at the last minute. Now, we can go on with this vote, we can talk about the language, but maps, the problem with the maps is not the maps, it's that we're not properly addressing what our intentions are for inside villages. And I appreciate if we can skip to the issues.
Can I speak, Ms. Pierce?
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Ishin.
Thank you very much. I will also just say I understand the frustration, but I do believe it's not accurate to suggest that we are bringing these up for the first time just last meeting. We discussed in detail the language mentioned by Mr. Light, and that was voted down. We've also discussed in detail the fact that we were concerned, I certainly have brought up concerns with including highway commercial in Sperryville, in the Sperryville map, and also including any inconsistencies among the maps. So if we had all the maps saying the same thing, village commercial, village residential, with language as Mr. Light has suggested, that would, as I said, maintain the status quo. That, I'm pretty sure we brought up that issue a number of times and discussed it at some length. I don't, while I appreciate the frustration, I don't think it's accurate to say that we're somehow, anybody sort of ambushing this issue at the last second. I think these have been, have been topics of debate from the very beginning. So the fact that we've decided on these maps with these things that several, certainly myself, I've expressed discomfort with all along, is not that I'm impugning anybody else's motives, I just don't think they're the right thing to do for us at this time.
Okay, thank you. I want to respond to what Mr. Light said, because this is on page 95 and 96 of the plan, in chapter seven, Future Land Use Plan, Residential Development. The parts that were changed, the first paragraph didn't get changed at all. The second paragraph, which is in blue, which wasn't changed at all. This is what was in the previous December draft, as I understand it. Only the red parts have been changed since December. So what it said, when, you know, back in last December, the draft that was approved by the commission, "A review of existing land use patterns indicates that residential development, not any kind of development, residential development, is either of low or medium density as, and this is the part that was added, as permitted by the current zoning ordinance with low-density development per end one dwelling unit for 25 acres closed per end in agricultural and conservation districts, and medium-density development per end one dwelling unit per 1 to 5 acres..." per one to five acres per end, closed per end, proximal," I didn't know that was a word. I think it should be proximate, but anyway, "to village areas in residential village, residential, and rural residential zoning districts. When considering areas of future building suitability as well as public utilities and transportation, low-density residential development continues to be appropriate in the conservation and agricultural areas, while medium-density development should continue to be focused in or around the county's villages." That's what it said last December. None of that was changed, not by me or anybody else. Then, we added at the end, "As noted in chapter five, Rappahanna County is home to five primary villages." And then it lists them all. These villages are not incorporated," this is what you wrote, Mr. Light, "with my, some, what you said tweaking for me." No, let's read it. And you tell me what you're not happy with. Wait a minute. "These villages are not incorporated and have no formal boundaries, but represent development patterns that have taken place over the history of the county. Current zoning in and around villages generally reflects current and historical uses of the land. As noted in the preceding chapters, this plan envisages and encourages that future residential and commercial development be focused in or around the major villages. To give greater clarity to this objective in light of the lack of administrative village boundaries, the future land use maps reflect the current zoning in villages. Maps numbers fifteen A through fifteen E show the contiguous areas of each village that are zoned residential village, commercial village, commercial highway, and in the village of Sperryville, the areas zoned residential R-two and residential rural R-R-five that are contiguous to and/or actually or potentially served by the existing sewer treatment lines. The designated areas in these zoning categories provide for anticipated development and envisioned growth during the next five to ten years without rezoning any additional areas outside the existing villages or the expansion of existing residential and commercial zones in the existing villages." Because I want to know exactly what it is that you say, "I tweaked or took out or added in that changed the intent or anything else." Because that's exactly what we all discussed, and that's exactly what we agreed to.
All right, thank you. It's the last sentence. And what I didn't realize is, you refer to not zoning outside the villages. So you've limited it to outside the villages, the reference to no need for rezoning, or expansion of the existing residential and commercial zones. So you've now made it less clear that what we're saying is, we don't think we need additional density in those existing zones. The only thing you've now ruled out is rezoning outside the villages or expansion of residential and commercial zones within the village. What you, the meaning that you've changed is you've made it ambiguous as to our view about having further subdivision or more intensive residential development in the villages. And that is the change.
Mr. Light, if you knew what was in the zoning ordinance, you would know that there is no more intensive use. But there is no more intensive zone than village, commercial, village, residential. With a one-acre minimum lots size, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance anywhere that's more intensive than that.
But we now have, we now have R-five in some cases.
No.
Or we have R-two. So the point is, it is ambiguous as to what we're saying about the needs for rezoning inside the villages.
Right.
It was clear before, and now it's not.
Why? What was clear before?
It was clear before, is the statement that said, "We believe that the current zoning, period, is adequate for anticipated development the next five to ten years."
That's what it says. Without rezoning any additional areas outside the villages or the expansion of existing...
So you've narrowed it. So expansion of existing residential doesn't say anything about what we're saying, about whether we should take R-five down to R-one or R-two, or for that matter, to...
Well, wait, no. If you took R-five down to R-one, you'd be expanding existing residential. You'd be existing, you'd be making it, what would you rezone R-five to? There's only one, there's only two places you could go, or three.
R-one.
No, there's R-two, R-one, or village residential.
Point of order. We still are confusing the general discussion of a comprehensive plan with the definitive language that should be in the zoning ordinance.
We're not confusing anything, sir. This is what's...
No, I'm sorry.
This is, well, you interrupted me. Did you have the order?
No, I said, point of order. That's not an interruption.
All right. Wait a minute, let's get this straight. I don't see what you're talking about.
Let me try again.
It says exactly what you said it should say. That there doesn't need to be any expansion of existing residential and commercial zones in the existing villages. Well, if you took the R-five, or even if you put some agriculture, whatever, in there, it still says, "We don't envision any expansion." Well, there would be an expansion if you took R-five and turned it to R-two, R-one, or village residential. You'd be expanding one of those three zones. And this says, "There isn't, there doesn't need to be any expansion of any of those zones or any of the commercial zones either." So how could, I don't understand what you're saying.
I agree with this, and thank you for that clarification. You have now directly addressed my concerns. So thank you for that.
Yes, I sent it to you, and you said you were fine with it. And that's how it got in here. So I don't know what you're yelling at me for about it, that I somehow snuck around your back, behind your back and changed this.
I only responded when you impugned my motives and said I didn't do anything, pretending, sir. So the existing village language, it's the expansion of existing residential and commercial zones. I took that to mean, we don't need to take anything that isn't residential and make it residential, or anything that's commercial and not make it commercial. Your interpretation of saying going from R-five to R-one would be an expansion of an existing, of existing residential zoning is a different interpretation than I would make. And that is surprisingly mad.
Mr. Chairman, you know, the comprehensive plan is a broad plan. I don't see where, we have the authority, the right, or anything given to us, to say that there'll be no expansion in an area, no expansion in the county, no expansion in an area. That's for the facts, when that request comes up to be determined, not only by the appropriate planning officials but by the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, I think to say that it's a moratorium on anything in any area of county for the next ten years, goes far beyond the authority that we have. And it's another example of an opportunity for somebody to get the whole ordinance stopped out. So I take great exception to that issue that we're stating in the plan. So...
I wonder if I could miss, I could actually...
Just a minute, because, you know, I don't know how I got into this, Mr. Light, but I wasn't finished with what I had to say, because Mr. Henry reminded me of it before I was interrupted. What I want to say is, that, exactly that. This is a comprehensive plan. This is an outline of what we want. Mostly, it's an outline of what we don't want. And that's exactly what was tweaked and why it was tweaked. Because to me, that's the most important language in here, that we can, that everything will be in the designated areas without the expansion of existing residential and commercial areas. That's the whole point of it. We don't see the need for any expansion of any of those zones. And if, whatever, I mean, you know, this is also the antithesis of good planning. When you sit here at a meeting of a comprehensive plan, and five different people start talking about Tom Taylor's property, and what should or shouldn't happen to Tom Taylor's property, or Joe, John Doe's property, or, you know, anybody else. It's not about some individual's property. It's about the county, and what's in the best interest of the county. And if this property or that property is zoned, right now, R-five or R-one or village commercial, they have whatever rights they have to be in that zone. If they want to develop it, they're going to have to, you know, if property owner A is in, inside the village, even though it already says in the language, "We don't see a need," just because they're in the village, "we don't see a need to expand any of the other zoning categories." Well, they can still come in and say, just like you could come in right now and say, and use the map. Pick up the aerial map and say, "Here, look, I'm inside the frame of the map. I want to be rezoned to village residential and have one-acre zoning instead of five-acre zoning." Well, it would have to come to this commission. And along the things, if this issue wants to bring up, well, the sewer system isn't adequate to deal with that. Well, obviously, that would be a factor that the commission would have to take up and take into consideration in making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors of whether or not to approve the rezoning. It's not like because we're making these maps, they're automatically going to get rezoned. That's absolutely not true. That is a real red herring that's been thrown into this meeting and into the whole discussion. That is just not so. Whatever your zoning category is today, if this plan is passed, it's going to be the same zoning category with the same restrictions tomorrow. The only difference is, if people come in and say, "I want to be rezoned," I mean, pick anyone up there. Pick your Amisville map. Look at all that. There's Amisville. It goes all over the place. It goes way down past, I think, Early's Carpet. No, excuse me, it doesn't. It goes past the fire hall. No, there's the fire. It goes past the fire hall, and it goes all the way up the hill, and it goes way past the post office, and it goes way on the north side of two-eleven. Anybody could come in and say the same thing. Hey, I'm in the area designated for growth, and I want to be rezoned. And then, you would have a hard time to say no. Because there's nothing but vapid other language in there that says, "Well, it ought to be somewhere around the existing villages." And they'd say, "Well, oh, look, I'm somewhere around the existing villages, and in fact, look, I'm right inside the frame of this map, of this aerial photo." Whereas what we've put up, or, well, it's gone now, but what we've got in, in the plan, is way less than that. So all you people who are all concerned about, what, what did you say? Open-ended development? There's your open-ended development. What's in there now, the language that I just read, puts a stop to open-ended development. And that's why it was written that way. And everybody, and I mean everybody on this stage, knows exactly why that language was put in there like that.
Yes, I understand.
No, I'm sorry. Because I think we're close. I would just add, Mr. Chairman, if it means what you've just described, then why have that ambiguous phrase at the end? What is wrong with the just saying, "Up through the designated areas envisioned for anticipated growth for the next five to ten years without rezoning any additional areas, period." What is the point of all that other stuff if it's not to invite or allow for some kind of rezoning? It's a statement that we don't see a need for it. And it seems to me that by adding that other stuff, those words can only narrow it.
Because, I'll tell you why it's in there. Because it's a matter of exactly what Mr. Henry said. If you don't have that language in there, some kind of language like that, and you try to put in language that completely puts a de facto moratorium on any rezoning, it's never going to stand up in court.
It's not a moratorium to say we don't envision the need.
Well, okay, all right, all right. Let's say we did what you said. Let's say we put the period where you said it left, a whole other phrase off. If you did that, and somebody comes in for a rezoning, all the neighbors who don't want the rezoning, most of whom are here tonight, depending on what district it's in, and then the other ones who find out it's right next door to them, are going to come in and say, "Look, what's in the comprehensive plan? It says, 'We don't envision the need for any additional rezoning.'" And if the Board of Supervisors were to deny it on that basis, the court's going to throw it out because it's too restrictive.
Okay, then it doesn't mean what you just told me, I meant.
Can we get back to the vote? Get this done.
All right.
Yeah, actually, now, I took the floor because Mr. Henry brought up a few things and sort of Mr. Prime, that I feel like need addressing.
I think the question's been called, so...
Ah, may I please ask for time to respond to things that have been raised? I believe that the chairman's called, not the commissioners' call, to say they don't want to have people respond to points they were raised. But I do think it's appropriate to have. When you've raised comments, do you be able to address them? Could we do that, please?
No, because we're just going to go back and forth and back and forth. The question's been called. Let's vote. We've got a motion on the floor to approve the plan without the maps. Is that pretty much your motion? Mr. Kohler's motion.
Well, and to, kind of, create, to work on it steady forward so that we can get the maps where they should be.
Right, so to recommend approval without any maps, or without the village maps.
The village map.
And to, and to have some study group to revise the maps.
Still, they could be done appropriately.
Well, I don't know what appropriate is, but anyways, that's the motion. So we're going to take a roll call, vote them. Mr. Light?
No.
Wait, what is no?
No means, I don't think the right concern is to take the maps out.
Thank you.
You vote to leave them out.
I vote to leave them. Voting no in your motion? What, okay. Mr. Shulman?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
No.
Mr. Fraser?
No.
Ms. Zushi?
Aye.
And I vote no. All right. Somebody want to make a motion to recommend the comprehensive plan?
I would like to make a motion that we, without the task force, that we take out...
The same maps, fifteen A through...
Not quite. I move that we approve a resolution recommending approval of comprehensive plan, but we remove the words "future land use maps" and as well as on page ninety-four, the redline version, that we remove the third full paragraph on page ninety-six of the redline version. We remove maps number fifteen E-A through fifteen E, and replace the new version of map number eighteen with the previous version. Map number eighteen being the commercial, otherwise. And so, I understand folks have said they don't think the task force is the way to go on this, but I think that if we're not going to have, recommending that, we should have the option of removing this map. And again, I will say...
Well, let's see if there's going to be a second to your motion. And you can speak. Is there a second?
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't hear the motion from the bell going off there.
See, so I...
There's a peeper going off, I can't see it.
I repeat motion. I move that we approve the resolution, a resolution recommending the approval of the comprehensive plan that we remove from, that we remove the words, quote, "future land use maps," end quote, and quote, as well as, end quote, on page ninety-four, the redline version. That we remove the third full paragraph on page ninety-six of the redline version. That we remove the maps numbers fifteen A through fifteen E.
Just a minute, which redline? The third?
The one that Michelle provided to us.
No, which, what's the, what's the text you want to remove?
On page ninety-four, the redline version. I can read that.
Ninety-four, I, well, I don't know if I... Ninety-four or ninety-six?
Ninety-six, yeah.
Just read it.
Ninety-six. The language that says...
What's the paragraph start out at?
I don't know if I can. I need glasses.
This comprehensive plan contains future land...
Thank you.
Maps, land use maps. You want that removed?
Correct.
There it is, because I don't even see that.
Third paragraph, first line, or... Ninety-four, page ninety-four.
Oh, okay, that.
It's...
The third paragraph after future land use plan.
And as well as...
That's been in there.
Well, my...
Since December.
I'll keep it.
All right.
And then, on page ninety-six, to take out the third full paragraph.
As noted in chapter five?
No, the paragraph, the third full paragraph.
Oh, to give greater clarity?
Correct.
All right, that's the one I just read.
Correct.
All right, take that out, take the other one out, and take the map out.
And take map number eighteen out as well.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
What, I'm sorry, what maps are, are we taking maps out?
So we would be taking...
Maps fifteen A through fifteen E, which... Maps 15A through 15E, which is all the village maps, as well as the commercial map, the revised commercial map.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not happy with the...
Well, we have, we've got a motion on the floor, let's have a second motion.
You'll second it.
All right, great, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Further questions?
The question's been called. All right, Mr. Light?
No.
Mr. Shuland?
No.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
No.
Mr. Fraser?
No.
Ms. Ishi?
Yes.
Mr. Conick votes no. All right, can somebody please make a motion to recommend approval?
I move that the planning commission forward the recommendation for approval. This resolution has been verified to the adoption of the comprehensive plan with the, with the maps as a plan.
Is there a second? Ah, Mr. Henry seconded the motion. All right, is there any further discussion?
Is there any reason for further discussion? Since we're full, we can't, we can't talk if we would like to have the conick votes. Is there any? I, I'm confused as to what that request for further discussion is.
Well, that, that was on a previous motion, and we've already been back and forth about three times. So, do you want to speak to this motion or no?
I will just respond that on the previous motion...
Well, that's out of order. The previous motion's been, already voted on, so it's over. So, you might have to, the motion that's on the floor now is to approve, send this plan to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval pursuant to the drafted resolution that circulated before the meeting. That's the motion that's on the floor and has been seconded. So, again, if you have any comments on that, you're welcome to make them.
I do, thank you. I would like to say that there, it is, it is not a correct statement to say that when you put something in a comprehensive plan, it does not affect future zoning. It clearly affects future zoning. What is in the comprehensive plan is not the zoning itself, but if you say in the comprehensive plan that we are encouraging development within a certain zone or area, and somebody comes in, if you haven't defined what your parameters are for that encouraged zoning, if somebody comes in with a zoning application and you haven't defined parameters, and they say, "I've got, I've got the zoning application", if you just say, "I want to encourage growth", they'll say, "Yours encourage growth." And you say on the comprehensive plan, for example, "I want to encourage, um, we want to encourage affordable housing", somebody comes in with a proposal to rezone for more intense development, for affordable housing, they can meet the state code requirements for either helping to provide cost for necessary infrastructure. At that point, you have almost no basis for denying that request for zoning. And if you haven't, whereas if you haven't said you want to encourage more development, you have all the same things Mr. Henry said, that, so, so he is quite right, I would agree, that if somebody comes in who's outside that boundary and wants a request for zoning, we can still look at all the factors we might want to look at and still grant that rezoning request. It doesn't mean just because you're outside the boundaries that you can't get a rezoning. But if you're inside that boundary and you come in with a rezoning request, if we don't have, if we have lost some control over saying no to that rezoning request, if we haven't put sufficient parameters around that. Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard on any of this?
I agree. That's what I'm going to do, I don't, I don't like, I think the maps, uh, create, uh, more problems than they solve at this time.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Light?
Uh, I'm just going to repeat for the record, for anybody who cares, that I think it would be a lot better if we just ended it at, without rezoning any additional areas, period, because I don't know what the rest does.
Okay. Well, Mr. Henry, do you have anything to say? All I want to say is, I don't agree with what, what Ms. Ishi just said, because if, all I will say is that if you're not in the designated zone, I'd say your zoning application is DOA. If you're inside it, there's still a whole host of considerations, all the things that everyone here tonight has talked about, the traffic impact that Ms. Bruce talked about, the sewer availability, and whether it leaks uphill or downhill, whether there's adequate, uh, capacity, whether there's adequate water in the water table, especially that PS that came up, uh, when they rezoned the golf course and approved that for Mr. Miller in Sperryville, and basically eliminated almost all of the future area designated for growth in the, in the R2 zone that was there. Uh, so, all of those things, traffic, congestion, water availability, uh, the availability or at, capacity of the sewer system, noise, light, all those factors will be taken into consideration. Uh, the impact, by the way, on the schools, the additional, uh, revenue or spending requirements, all of those things are all on the table when they come in for the rezoning. And if they don't meet whatever the standards are, or they don't, they can't satisfy to the, the board supervisors and the planning commission, that their, that the rezoning is not going to have a deleterious effect on the surrounding neighborhood, it can be denied. The mere fact that it's within the area that's designated as the village is not an automatic thing. If that were true, then, then everywhere in the county would be subject to a rezoning on that theory, because it puts, huh?
Everywhere in the county?
It, it puts zoning, it, it puts the whole concept of what zoning and rezoning, uh, categories is, stands it on its head. It's up to the local governing body, based on the recommendations from the planning commission, which they're free to follow or ignore. But the factors that they have to take into consideration on every rezoning, number one is, is it consistent with the com plan? If the answer to that is no, or if it's outside the zone that's designated the map, like I said, it's DOA, but that doesn't mean that because it's within that area, that it's an automatic approval.
Well, Mr. Conick, if...
I don't think it is by any means.
If that were the case, how could, then, then are creating these maps as a moratorium? That, that doesn't make, it's not calling sense.
Okay.
We, we just approved a few months ago a rezoning of the Estes Mill property up there. Are you telling us that, that that would no longer be able to be approved? I, I don't think that's true. And furthermore, if what you're saying is true about the boundaries inside the village, then why are we, why are we creating any boundaries? If, if, if it's...
I understand, because it protects the rest of the county, not, it's not to protect what's inside the village as much as it's to delineate an area outside of which you shouldn't have any...
So, that means something inside has special consideration? You've just said it has no special consideration, I, I don't, that's...
All right.
Can we have a vote? Listen, Congress asked, go back.
What, they're going to take the bridge?
Yeah.
All right, let's vote. The vote is to adopt the resolution that circulated prior to the meeting. Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Shuland?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Ishi?
No.
Mr. Conick votes aye. The motion's adopted.
So, what was the point of us coming here tonight? You're going to pass this thing and ignore everything that was said to you. Why are you not coming back and doing this again with our requests? But what is the point of having a public hearing? Did it make you feel good? Because it was a waste of our time.
Well, it's a pleasure of the commission about the minutes, because I'm pretty tired. It's 10 o'clock at night, this summer's once again, so is everybody else, so blame it on you.
I'll make a motion, join the meeting for approval of the minutes.
All right, but before we do that, I don't want, I don't, we talked previously about not adjourning the meeting, but having a, but recessing the meeting, so we could have a work session to work on the so-called May amendments, so.
I do think there was a valid point made by May, Mr. Chairman. You know, there was some errors observed and some of those things, I presume we can clean up some of that, so I, I think it's a fair point that we haven't been very explicit about what, if anything, we're going to do to correct some of the things or make some of the changes that have been put forward tonight, right? And I just, we don't need to act on that, I just suggest that you, you think about how we address that.
All right, well, we can do that, we can do that when we...
It doesn't seem out of order, because the motion in the vote must have poured as planned as it was.
The board of supervisors can add those things.
Right. That's, I mean, the things that are like tech posts and those kinds of things, they can correct when they get them. All right, what's, let's talk about dates for our work session. Do you want to do it the Wednesday after Labor Day? Does that work for everybody?
The Wednesday after Labor Day?
Yeah.
The board meets the second, which is the Wednesday before Labor Day.
What?
Our, our board meets the Wednesday the second. So, we're talking about, okay, the ninth?
I think so, yeah. Yeah?
We're making a demand.
What's the word we're... I'm sorry, can we use dates?
The ninth would be the Wednesday after Labor Day.
All right, what about, well, next week's out for May, what about the, what's the following Wednesday? Your, your meeting is the Wednesday?
Because, because the board normally meets the following Wednesday after the holiday, but that was the ninth, so we agreed to meet on the second, which is actually before Labor Day this year.
I see.
So, we need the second, if you're talking about meeting the ninth.
Okay, well, that's out. So, uh, how about the next day, the Thursday? Can we do it on Thursday?
The ninth is silent, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, it turns out I got a conflict. I have a conflict.
Oh, you have a conflict. Do you have to be there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the tenth is silent, I, I don't really have anything to add.
You'll know, the tenth or the, how about the, when do you all meet? What day, the second?
We meet the second.
Well, what about the third?
I think the third is clear.
Thursday the third, you want to do it in the daytime or in the evening?
Evening, I would prefer either.
I'm sorry, we're talking about a, a work session to this...
Well, we're going to recess this meeting for the...
For the, okay, continue this.
And continue, so we don't have to put out all the notices and so forth and so on, and we're going to work on the May amendments.
So, September 1st?
Well, yeah.
I meant I'd motion to say recess until the, to the third.
What time, 7:00?
7:00.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have a conflict.
What?
I'm sorry, I have a school orientation conflict that I can't address.
What day of the week is that, the third, or Thursday?
I can do the second if they're going to, I can get what the problem is.
What time is your all's meeting?
It's a regular hour, it's 2:07.
That's the second? All right, what about the first? Which is Tuesday? First is fine.
I guess.
So, the Monday...
Before, like, this, this doesn't have anything on it for me, so I, I don't know, all I see is Labor Day. I know I've got other stuff, but it's not on this calendar, because I don't know how to do that.
All right, so you're going to amend your motion. So, is the first is Monday?
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday, the first is September 7:00, at where? Here, the elementary school, the courthouse. Let's go back to courthouse.
No, sir, let's do the elementary school.
Why?
But we don't know that it's available. We chair.
If we could find out, I think, we are, we, we allow more members of the public as well, to come with the planning commissioners, to have, um, the appropriate precision decision thing, which is, we allow, there's usually a name. Since this commission has decided that it's difficult for planning...
All right, well, subject to, well, I don't know how we can do that if we, if we...
Let's just adjourn it until the first, this summer's, until what space is available.
Well, if we're not going to, if we're going to not state the place to land, we have to put out a FOI, but all right, if we have to, we have to. Okay, the first at 7:00, either at the elementary school, or here, or in front of that, the courthouse against. Yes, ma'am?
Is there going to be a public comment period this evening? There's not on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda?
It was, it was.
I just have something very brief I'd like to say, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank this commission for taking the time to go back and revisit the comprehensive plan. After our meeting of last November in the music room in this high school, board of supervisors, of which I am the chair, had had a study done, which found multiple shortcomings, I believe there were 10 or 11 shortcomings, that existed in that version of the comprehensive plan. And the direction from the board is clear at that time, and we ask this body to go back and rectify those shortcomings and bring us a better quality document. And I believe this is a much better document that you have sent up to us this evening, and I thank you very much for taking the time to go back and fix those shortcomings. I also would like to point out that I am also disappointed somewhat in this process, because the people that voted not to send the plan up tonight are people that thought a far less adequate plan should be sent up to the board of supervisors last fall. And members of this commission, when I was on this commission, and asked for us to do additional meetings, additional plannings, additional listenings, and they didn't have that volume at that time in the spring of 2019, now want to go back a year and a half later and undertake those things. We need to complete this document. I thank you for sending it up to the board tonight. I think it is a living document and can, should continue to be worked on, or can continue to be worked on, but I would ask that you please work together more now, more than ever, and leave behind you votes that you don't win in the process of working on the ordinances. I really appreciate your hard work on this document, I look forward to further refinement of it at the board level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so, there's a motion to recess until September 1st at 7:00, either here or at the elementary school, the courthouse.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded, and we're going to do the minutes at that time, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meetings are here.